Good evening. I call this December 14, 2021 Virtual Administrative Meeting of the Bernalillo County Commissioners to Order. We will have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by myself because I haven't led the pledge this year. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I think in the spirit of saving some time tonight, I'd like to ask to defer the State of the County presentation to the January 11th meeting, and that's item 11C. And a vote is required for that change. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I am quick to move for approval on that. Do we have a second? I think Commissioner O'Malley, all in favor, raise your hand. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Barboia.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
So called.
And thank you. That passes unanimously, so we will look forward to that next month. And so moving on, proclamations. Acknowledgement of accounting and budget, Shirley Reagan to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. In the spirit of time, I'm going to turn it over to our Accounting and Budget Director, Jackie Sanchez, to talk a little bit about the award and introduce her staff. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jackie Sanchez, Director for Accounting and Budget. Thank you for the acknowledgement of the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for Fiscal Year and June 30, 2020. The presentation, or excuse me, the preparation of the annual comprehensive financial report and popular annual financial report is accomplished through collaboration, determination, and hard work of a brilliant team. Bernalillo County was notified that both reporting award programs have once again been recognised. The Bernalillo County Finance Division has received the certificate for excellence in financial reporting for the 17th consecutive year and 20th year overall. The Finance Division has also received the popular annual financial reporting award program for the eighth consecutive year. I would like to recognise my staff that has joined us this evening and just recognise them for their outstanding work. We have Jennifer Galindo, Trudy McGregor, Leticia Cardion, Carla Nieto, Kim Rosales, and I would like to recognise staff that could not be here this evening, Brandy Pacheco Martinez and Lucy White. We also have our fixed asset payroll and budget sections. I would like to mention retirees that were contributors to the FY20 reporting, and that was Pamela Moon, former Director of Accounting and Budget, Anthony Infantino, David Trujillo, and Renata Harrison. Also, thanks to other departments that provided information to complete the annual reports in contributing toward the success of the county. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for a job well done.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, we will move along. Public comment and communications. Before we hear public comment, we will proceed with the communication item, and that is Bernalillo County Extension Services. So Enrico, would you like to take it away? Or should I just introduce?
I would, but I think you have someone far more qualified. You don't want to hear what, something from me. I think Brittany's here to give us a presentation on some of the programming and programs with the County Extension Office, so I'll hand it off.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, is everybody able to see my screen? I know that's like the new term of this last year. There we go. So yes, my name is Brittany Sontag. I am the urban 4H agent here in Bernalillo County. I was asked today just to give you a real quick update on some of the things we have done over the past year. So first, I just wanted to start it, start with talking about 2020. We held our first ever virtual 4H fair. That was a very interesting fair. Trying to have kids show livestock through videos has definitely shown some different challenges, but we also had some fun with it. And if you look at this picture, you can see that we had one of our Cloverbud members who actually participated in our costume contest. So she was able to dress up her little goat and have all sorts of fun without ever leaving her house. Our exhibit numbers were down. Most of it was due to the rabbit hemorrhatic disease. So we did, basically, it's a very transmittable disease, and so we were not able to have our rabbits really do much showing. But we were able to keep our sales at a normal rate, so we were still able to get our buyers to show up even though our fair was virtual. But moving along to 2021, we were back at the state fairgrounds. We had 110 exhibitors who exhibited 758 different animals and projects, and we actually increased our sale numbers this year. And so we had kids in just a little bit of everything, horses, goats, lambs, dogs, chickens. I think we even had an iguana, because we did have an open pet show, so we let kids show whatever pet they have, including goldfish. Some exciting things we've had happen this year is that three of our county 4H teams actually qualified to compete at the national level. So to do that, they had to be the winner at the state. So we had the High Point team and Archery Recurve, and so they went to, I want to say Nebraska, and competed. Unfortunately, they were not in the top 10. And we had our national 4H food challenge team who went to Texas, and they ended up fourth overall. And they were the highest placing out of state team, which was exciting. Texas ended up having three teams that went for second and third. And then we had our hippology team, who will be going to nationals in Denver in January. And hippology is the study of horses, not the study of hippos. I get asked that one all the time. Just continuing on, supporting Bernalillo County 4H schools. So we've been doing a lot of different projects, really kind of changing how we provide our schools' programs. And we're still doing our chicken hatching. We've been doing some aquaponics and hydroponics. We have our river exchange program. And then, of course, our biggest challenge has been COVID-19 restrictions and being allowed in the classroom. And my understanding is that now I am able to start going in the classroom, so I am looking forward to starting my programs back in person. We do have our military 4H program. We were able to continue offering programs in person because they were able to stay in person throughout all of COVID. And so we did a little bit of everything, healthy living, baking, STEM, and of course, chicken hatching. And then we're really looking forward to some of the things we have coming up with them this spring. Just moving forward, we're really looking at adopting more of our activities through hybrid, expanding our school outreach, continuing to build and expand upon our online resources, and hopefully getting a little bit closer to normal. Are there any questions? I know that was quick, but I know you have a lot going on, so I didn't want to hog time.
Commissioner Barboia.
And I just want to say, thank you, Brittany. I did have a question. Where, when you say Bernalillo County 4H urban schools, what, how many of them are there and where are they?
So we serve all schools in Bernalillo County. So here in Albuquerque, Los Rancho, out in the east mountains. So any school that basically falls under the county, that includes our public, our private, and our charter schools.
Awesome. And do schools have to do something to get you to come to be a part of the program?
They just have to let me know. My programs are free, so they just have to let me know that they're interested in having a program. My chicken hatching program is by far my most popular, so I do tend to get a waitlist on that. But I tend to, if they're waitlisted this year, they're guaranteed to get it the following year.
Awesome. As a daughter of, her granddaughter of ranchers, I appreciate it and have lots of my dad's old 4H ribbons.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. And Enrico, I'd like to say thank you for turning that over to Brittany because she did a very good job. So thank you, Brittany.
They always do.
Okay, so then, moving on to public comment. In the interest of time, you will have one minute to share your comments. You will then be notified when your time is up. You will then be muted and be moved to the waiting room. Should any of the commissioners have follow-up questions to your comments, you will have an opportunity to answer. So Julianne, how many people do we have signed up for public comment?
For general public comment, we have a total of eight signed up.
Okay. Do you want to call those people in, please?
Sure. So I'm going to call them in three. So the first is Leslie Glass. Next is Linda Dietz, followed by Holly Dietz.
Hi. Am I supposed to speak now? I'm Leslie Glass.
Yes, go ahead. You have one.
Okay. I haven't done this before, so I don't know. I just wanted to speak about the property, the Sandia Ranch property, which was bought with a bond issue in 2014 for Parks and Recreation with it. And this plan has been different than what we had thought with it in July of 19, with it. There was a meeting and we were told there was going to be a school placed on the property. And what is brought up that it was supposed to be used for recreational facilities with it, we were told that the county owned the property and they could do what they wanted with it. And I guess this begs the question that if the county can do what it wants with property that's bought for one specific reason with public money, with it, can anybody use any of the other properties and use them for what they want regardless of what the community around there thinks or feels about it? But that's, so that's the main thing, that this was supposed to be for recreational facilities, and the school really does not fall into that category at all. So that's basically my comment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Glass.
We have Linda Dietz, Holly Dietz, followed by Elizabeth Haley.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Linda Dietz. I live at 717 Ebon Lollard, Northeast Albuquerque, New Mexico. My topic tonight is the 2014 Parks and Rec Bond Language. In 2014, over 100,000 voters in Bernalillo County voted in favour of that bond language. In 2015, the county bought Sandia Ranch with those funds. The county now has devised a plan that nullifies the stated purpose of that bond language. Those plans will soon be approved. I am urging the Commission to clarify what the bond language means before the county airs and uses Sandia Ranch for purposes not sanctioned by that bond language. Voters will have a right to feel deceived if the current county plan is approved. Your silence on this issue can be used as a cover-up of impending misuse of public funds. It is an abuse of the public trust. Please address what the 2014 bond language means. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next, please.
Yes, can you move me?
Go ahead, Holly.
Yes. Yes, my name is Holly Dietz, and this is regarding the use of the property. So I have been involved with 4H. I've been involved with Pony Club for myself as well as for my children. And all my feelings are putting a school for the deaf, or any school, at this point, you know, in our situation with children, we have safe sport. I know, I would assume in schools, there is also now ways to protect children, but it is not a public forum anymore. So by, by putting a school for the deaf, or any school, for that matter, on, in this situation, it does, becomes not a community event, a community purpose. It becomes a private purpose, because I will be floored if I can walk in that school for the deaf, or any school, and not be told to sign in, and I can't walk into the classrooms and start participating. Where the other organization, the 4H organization, which is based on community events and have done a very good job, is, is great. So I guess I request that you consider that use of the property as a community endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Who's next, Julianne?
In my apologies, I had called on somebody who has wishing to speak during a public hearing item, so we'll move on to Laura De La Rue, who I'm not seeing on the attendee side, but for the record, she did sign up, followed by Chris Christie, followed by Linda Trujillo, followed by Robert Hall.
Okay, is Chris Christie here? I'm not seeing a Chris Christie. Who's next?
I do have him permitted into the meeting, but he is on mute. We can go on to the next. Linda Trujillo, but for the record, she signed up, but she is also not on. And same for Robert Hall. So unless Mr. Chris Christie can unmute himself, that would complete public hearing, public comment.
Okay. Well, I'm not hearing from Chris Christie, so let's move on. To approval of minutes. I move to approve the November 9, 2021 Administrative Meeting Minutes. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Benson. All in favor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Hi, everybody. Seeing you waving at me.
Mr. Barboia.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
So called.
Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the consent agenda. We have several items that need numbers. Does anybody have any objection with these being on consent? Seeing no objections, Madam Clerk, please provide resolution number for item 7F and ordinance numbers for items 7J, K, L, and M.
Yes, ma'am. Number F4 is FR 2021-111. J is ordinance 2021-23. K is ordinance number 2021-24. L is ordinance number 2021-25. M is ordinance number 2021-26.
Okay.
Want to go on to eight?
It doesn't say to go on to eight. I think we should wait.
Okay.
Because there's, I think you're going to need a lot of them for the rest of the meeting, so, so hang in there, Madam Clerk. We'll be calling on you a lot. So I, I'll move to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Casada. All in favor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboia.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
So called.
Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Now, moving on, Madam Clerk, please provide ordinance numbers for items 8A, 8B, 8D, 8E, and 8F.
All righty. 8A is ordinance 2021-27. B is ordinance number 2021-28. D is, and David, ordinance 21-29. E is ordinance 2021-30. F is ordinance number 2021-31.
Okay, very good. So first up, item 8A, project revenue bond for La Serena Apartments LLC. May Ling or Marcos will present.
Good evening, Chair. I'm Marcos Gonzalez with Bernalillo County Economic Development. Members of the Commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends authorizing the Bernalillo County Commission to approve an ordinance to amend ordinance 2021-1 on behalf of La Serena Apartments for multifamily housing refunding revenue bonds. I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, so we are to conduct a public hearing. Julianne, is there anyone present to speak?
I'm sure. We do not have anybody signed up for this item for public hearing.
Okay, thank you. And so I see this is sponsored by Commissioner O'Malley. Commissioner O'Malley, do you want to go ahead and make the motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I guess if there's any questions for Marcos, he could get into further details. I think one of the, and I know that, you know, I did talk with Marcos and May Ling about this in economic development. I think one of the biggest challenges is, you know, getting the rents lower, getting the rents to, so that they're, to the families that are not rent burdened. And I think that we still have challenges in that area. The rents still are, are high for the lower income folks, or actually higher for people at the low to moderate income level as well. So, and then, and mostly, I believe this is an increase because of construction costs. Is that a fair?
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, that's correct. This increase is due to the arise in construction costs. And so for this project and the subsequent project after this, both the bonds have to be increases due to the rising cost of construction.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Oh, I'm sorry. I move approval. Sorry, I'm getting distracted. I apologize.
Okay. Commissioner O'Malley moves for approval. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Barboia. All in favor. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Barboia.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada. Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye. I believe that passes unanimously. I think Commissioner Casada said aye. If not, okay. Thank you. Moving on to 8B, project revenue bond for San Roque Apartments. Marcos, will you be presenting this one?
Yes. Madam Chair, and members of the Commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends authorizing the Bernalillo County Commission to approve an ordinance to amend ordinance 2021-2 on behalf of San Roque Apartments LLC for multifamily housing refunding revenue bonds. I'll stand for any questions. And just as the last project, this, the bonds amount for this project are also being increased due to the rising cost of construction.
Okay, thank you. And Julianne, is there anyone signed up to speak for this public hearing?
Madam Chair, there is none.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, I move approval.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboia.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
So called.
Thank you. That passes unanimously.
This is Tom Mantrek with the Development Team, and we've been developing affordable housing for 31 years and have never, in those 31 years, seen the stratospheric increase of construction costs that we're seeing. My, we were at a nation, National Affordable Housing Conference in Chicago about three weeks ago, and, and, and every state which was present, and every lender, and every state housing agency echoed what I'm seeing right now. And the reoccurring theme was that if we are going to continue to deliver this housing that is so needed, that we all have to give a little, which we have, and we know the county has, and we're very grateful for that. But the, the term partnership and collaboration was used over and over again. And we thank very profoundly Bernalillo County for helping in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you for adding that comment. And I, I think that we know that we, that the costs definitely have gone up for construction, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Moving on to 8C, notice of intent to amend ordinance for GRIPP Pilot Travel Centers LLC. Marcos, are you presenting on this?
Yes. Madam Chair, members of the Commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends the approval of the notice of intent to adopt an ordinance, amending ordinance 2021-15, approving a gross receipts investment policy for Pilot Travel Centers LLC. This project is being amended because additional public infrastructure was identified by the Department of Transportation for, for this project. So Pilot Travel Centers is requesting additional GRIP funds in order to complete that additional public infrastructure. There are representatives from the project that are in the meeting as well, and they had some brief comments to provide to you a lot for that. I'm Madam Chair.
Okay. I just want to ask a quick question, Marcos. What is the amount of the funding they're requesting?
Madam Chair, the amount is about 1.6 million. So it's increasing from 701,350,000 that they had initially, I mean, 700,650,000 that they had initially requested, and now the new increase will be just over 1.4 million.
Okay, so we're back to the total of 1.4 million for pilot.
And this is for the initial, this is the initial infrastructure that was included plus the additional new infrastructure.
Okay, so who's here to speak on that?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Art Villacruz. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, go ahead.
I am a member of the Pilot Travel Center Development. This evening, I am joined by Mr. Ross Shaver, Project Manager and Construction Development for the Pilot Company, along with Mr. Ron Bohannon, TRO West. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for giving us this opportunity to present this important item tonight. This evening, we are requesting your approval for a notice of intent to amend an ordinance, approving a gross receipt infrastructure project for the Pilot Travel Centers LLC. We are here with you again because as similarly to our personal lives, not everything can be anticipated. The New Mexico Department of Transportation has The New Mexico Department of Transportation has mandated road project changes out of Pilot's control. Coupled with this are much higher road improvement costs. I will stand by to address the necessary community and human elements of the projects. Madam Chair, I will turn it over to Ross Shaver at this time to provide details, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, is there a way I can share my screen and just do a presentation that'll last just about two or three minutes?
Julianne?
Mr. Shaver have the ability to share a screen?
Okay, give me just one second here. Are you able to see my screen now where it says why is Pilot requesting amendment to the GRIP?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, good evening, thank you for allowing us to come back before you, uh, for the GRIP amendment. So I'm sure you're asking yourself, why is Pilot requesting this GRIP amendment? So I'm just going to walk you through that. So after the June hearing, we had multiple cost, uh, increases. Uh, really, o- honestly, to echo what the gentleman that just spoke before me regarding the bonds, we're seeing the same thing coast to coast. Um, the public bid process came back much higher than anticipated, and unfortunately, uh, we had very poor public bid turnout, we only received one bid. So coupled with the, um, volatility of cost on the material and, and, um, labor costs, uh, that was hundreds of thousands of dollars under budget based on the initial estimates, just because of the volatility and the amount of increases that occurred over that time to go through the GRIP, GRIP process. Uh, as Marco saluted, the DOT added, uh, multiple items of construction. Uh, the DOT added streetlights to the project, which occurred after the approval, uh, and the GRIP hearing. Uh, there's been change orders due to unforeseeable, uh, field conditions that not only affected our project, but also the county's project that's occurring from New Mexico Terminal Services there as well. Um, and the DOT did approve our appeal for a second access into the project for a ride-in, ride-out only. So, um, I know there's been a lot of discussion as to, uh, not only Pilot's project, but also the county project. So, um, obviously, it's one point four million dollars, it's a large sum of money. So I want to kind of walk you through what those scopes are just very quickly. So, uh, you can see on the screen here a green highlight and a pink highlight. And to help orient you, uh, on the right-handed side of the page would be the Broadway I twenty-five intersection. Uh, to the, the bottom of the page here, below the green highlight would be the frontage road, um, where New Mexico Terminal Services is going in the river. Uh, towards the top of the page would be the Pilot Travel Center project that's currently under construction. And the left-hand side of the page would continue to go, um, Broadway, um, northbound. So the county is currently constructing a right-turn lane and about half of the intersection in concrete for New Mexico Terminal Services, along with a dedicated left-turn pocket. And what you can't see on this picture here, they are also rerouting the southbound, um, off-ramp from I twenty-five for New Mexico Terminal Services. So we are essentially constructing the other half of the road, which would be the right-turn lane that you see here in the pink, uh, that is going into our main access, the right-turn lane, um, going into this ride-in, ride-out, a dedicated left-turn lane going into our main access, and then eight streetlights that the DOT added to the project. So, um, all in all, the initial scope of work, which was seven hundred thousand, and now the additional scope of work, plus the cost of around the have occurred, is another seven hundred thousand dollars, which brings the total GRIP to about one point four million. So, to walk back through the graphs and the, the, uh, financials that we shared last time, just very quickly. So this project is still projected, um, to generate two point nine five million dollars of GRT. Of that, the county will retain one point five five million dollars of GRT, and Pilot is being asked to, to be reimbursed out of that GRT that Pilot is creating, approximately one point four million dollars to help pay for the public infrastructure. So again, we're creating two point nine five million, we're asking for less than fifty percent of that back, um, to help pay for the public infrastructure cost. Um, to look at this in another way, from a payback period and value creation standpoint, so if you look at the GRT and the property tax that the project is creating, uh, we're projecting that it will pay back in five to six years. Uh, the county, the economic department, their estimate, um, the analysis they did, it was projected to pay back in three point one years and have an average annual return of twenty-eight point one percent. So if you look at that time value of creation over the thirty years of the GRIP, we're still going to have twenty-five to twenty-seven years after this GRIP is fully paid back, where this project between GRT and the property tax is estimated to create nine-plus million dollars of value for the county. So that's a significant amount of money that the county can still take and reinvest as they see fit. So, um, just to briefly get into the jobs again, so we're still on track to produce seventy-eight jobs, um, between the Pilot and the McDonald's for this project, with a total combined payroll of about one point five four million. Uh, the county estimated a hundred and two direct and indirect jobs, and we believe that we've, we're going to create about a hundred and thirty construction jobs throughout the life of this construction project. Um, so in closing, uh, this infrastructure is not only being used for Pilot, it's also being used for New Mexico Terminal Services and just the Broadway corridor in general, um, because the road has been deficient, and we're bringing it up to current DOT standards. Uh, the project is creating over nine million dollars of value for the county. Um, the county is not burdened with any expense from the GRIP, it's all being reimbursed from, from money that Pilot is generating through its tax revenue, and that we've completely burdened the two and a half million dollars for the water and sewer, uh, that the county is not putting any money towards whatsoever. Uh, and again, this project's creating desirable jobs and benefits, I'm not going to get into all the benefits. I know I provided a lot of information last time, um, of the health benefits, the assistance that we do, the training programs that we have to try to grow our employees, because we believe that the employees are the backbone of this company and what makes Pilot successful. Um, and we believe this will be a great location for Pilot, so we appreciate you guys continuing to be financial partners with us to assist us in this public infrastructure. And with that, uh, I just ask that you approve this GRIP notice of intent, and I will stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you. And are there any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
Okay. So, uh, I don't know who would answer this. So you mentioned that you've already spent over two million dollars in, uh, for water and sewers, so I assuming that you've already started some infrastructure construction, and you obviously own the site. Is that, where are you in the development process?
Y- yes, ma'am, we're under construction, uh, we've actually spent over two and a half million dollars for water and sewer. Uh, if you recall, we, we showed that water and sewer is currently about two to two and a half miles away. So we have built onsite utilities to overcome the water and sewer, uh, and we hope to open up here about the end of January.
Okay, so you're on, uh, you're on schedule for construction, and, um, you're committed to this project, you already have, you're not going anywhere, in other words.
I would, I would say we're behind, we're behind schedule, but
Yeah, but you are, but
we, we are under construction, yes, ma'am.
So you, you, the last time we talked, you had mentioned, well, the last time you requested funding, you had said, you know, that you were going to leave if you didn't get this funding, so I just wanted to, it doesn't look like you're going anywhere, you're, you're committed to this project of going forward.
We are not going anywhere, we are very committed, uh, we move forward in good faith, and unfortunately, we've had items added to us after some approvals required by the DOT, and there is also some unforeseen cost, um, and there's been unforeseen cost to both us and the county project that, uh, we've both been trying to resolve.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Casada.
Um, it's my, uh, it's my item. So, um, I would, uh, you know, I'd ask for approval, um, we know for a fact, and, and I know for a fact that, um, um, you know, construction costs have gone up, as you all know, I'm working on my own project, and I'm not even halfway done, and I'm past my budget. Um, you know, everything is sky-high when it comes to, uh, what it's going to cost. Um, hopefully in the future, it'll come down, uh, I don't know that. Uh, but, uh, you know, this is really important to the New Mexico trans-loading facility across the street, something also I've been working on for a couple of years, uh, to change, you know, our, uh, supply chain and how things, uh, and how we, uh, bring in, uh, goods, uh, to not only Burnley County, but to the state of New Mexico. So with that simple, uh, comment, I, I move for approval.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Casada. Um, and I guess I, I'd just like to add, it's good to see you again, Mr. Shaver, I know you do a great job for your company, and, um, I know that you're going to make unprecedented profits off of that location. Um, so, saying that, I think honestly, I, I would rather see that money go towards our affordable housing, so. Um, I, I'm not going to support this item, um, again, but I, I appreciate you being here and making your presentation. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, uh, the chart helps, actually, I appreciate seeing that chart and the, the payback for the county. I just want to, um, point out that currently, that lot is generating zero revenue for the county. Um, well, a little bit, property taxes, but this project will increase those property taxes, which there will be no discount on, and, um, the gross receipts tax, yes, we are delaying, uh, receiving some tax revenue. Uh, but it's a delay in something that is zero right now, so. And, uh, just in the spirit of trying to, uh, generate economic development, um, and encourage businesses to be here, which as a business owner myself, is very discouraging. I just want to, just remind everybody that it's, yes, we need affordable housing, but, uh, we also need businesses to generate revenue so that we can pay for affordable housing, so. Just want to point that out as I lend my support to it.
Thank you, Commissioner Barboia.
I guess there hasn't been a second yet, but I wanted to just note a couple of things, right, that, that, or I also ask, right, the seven hundred thousand that we did vote already to approve is there? Um, right, and I guess this ask for double the amount in my conversations last time, right, I voted for it because, um, Commissioner Casada, you know, expressed that he desires it for his district. Um, but I also commented, right, that as someone who lived under the shame of, um, you know, being accused of taking welfare, um, for my own family as a single mom while I was going through school, that I, I see this as another form of that, right, that we're supporting, um, welfare, and I, on the, I, I think that the other developments that have come to play are also that now we know with Amazon and the development of how, how important mail travel and, um, all of that stuff that happens within the airport and around it has made this an even more valuable space than the last time we had this conversation. Um, and I'm, you know, like Commissioner O'Malley mentioned, it's under construction underway. I'm glad that we're going to have that, and, um, I don't regret my past vote, but I can't support, um, you know, more corporate welfare while we're sort of all sinking or swimming at this point, and we're not providing much relief for small businesses in this kind of form, so. Um, I just wanted to, you know, sort of say, as, as the increase of costs have, um, have, have increased, so has the value of this property, of this position, where now, you know, we have Amazon, others really trying to figure out how we use this stretch of land to make, um, those, those spaces more effective, so. I just wanted to explain where I was and why.
Yeah, so I, I just want to make sure that I communicated clearly that these are not dollars the county is giving up, these are, these are dollars that Pilot is generating, and literally the county is just giving back to the dollars that we generate, so. I mean, to, to Madam Chair's point, the, the more successful this project is, the more gross receipts tax I, I, I generate. So, so it's a win-win, i- it is very unfortunate that the project is hundreds of thousands, I mean, to be exact, as you saw, it's seven hundred thousand dollars over budget. Um, I mean, honestly, w- we received one public bid for the road project, and right out of the gate, it was already three-plus hundred thousand dollars over what was estimated because of the volatility of the construction industry that has occurred. Um, from the time that the process started to the time we made the bid, had I known initially the cost of it is going to be one point four million dollars, that is exactly what we would have asked for a- out of the gate. This is not Pilot, I mean, I, I am held to whatever is spent as the GRIP ordinance is, is what we get reimbursed, so if for some reason, like the sightlights that we're currently bidding out, since that was just added and we got additional approval, if it comes back in ten thousand dollars cheaper than what we've estimated, we don't get the full amount, we get what is spent. So there's no way Pilot can take advantage or spend additional dollars in any other way besides the final amount that is spent for the road project, the benefits, the, the entire right-of-way and the public using it. So, I mean, Pilot didn't move forward in good faith, we do believe and hope that this is going to be a successful project, but we also, um, you know, move forward in faith that this was a partnership between us and the county to develop the public road infrastructure because we were going to fully take on the two and a half-plus million dollars of water and sewer infrastructure.
Madam Chair.
Um, go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, you know, and I think what's important to understand here is that, the, you know, the New Mexico transloader facility that this is supporting is a locally owned business. Um, so the business across the street is what I talked about in my last, uh, comments when we passed it originally, is what kind of businesses are going to come around this particular business, and what will it attract? Um, and, and I believe it will attract possibilities for local New Mexico companies to be successful. This is a prime example of that. Um, you know, i- it's not another corporation coming in across the street. It's a local guy who lives down the street, who is trying to build the New Mexico Transloader facility, which is extremely important to the state of New Mexico. I just want to make sure that I, I, I get back to that point, to, it's not about the Pilot, it's about what's going on around the Pilot and how we change what industry goes there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, and, and I'm sorry, the one thing I failed to mention is, we are building a traffic signal at this intersection. So it, it supports the New Mexico Terminal so, Terminal Services facility, but it makes the entire corridor a safer corridor because of the traffic light, because of the volume of traffic coming down through it. And, and obviously, I've discussed some of the issues, um, I, I know, uh, Mr. Archuleta is, is on here as well, and, uh, if, if, I think he's been involved in some of the issues that, that both the county and our project have, have undergone, and so, uh, if you want him to speak to it as well, I believe that he could do that also.
Um, well, I, I appreciate your, your presentation, Mr. Shaver, and I, I do wish you every success, I did understand your presentation. Um, so I don't have any more questions about that. Does anybody else? Okay, Commissioner Casada has motion, made a motion to approve, is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Benson. So all in favor? Raise your hand. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboia.
No.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
No.
Uh, Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Pescotti.
No. Okay, so that, that fails on a two-three vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
And so moving on to eight D, zoning code amendment, mobile food establishments. Nick Hamm or Lucas to present?
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Nicholas Hamm, zoning administrator for Burnley County. I'm here to present item eight D, which is a proposed amendment to the county zoning code to allow for mobile food establishments or food trucks to operate in the or food trucks to operate in the county C1 zone. This item was previously introduced at the October Board of County Commissioners Administrative Hearing. And we received input from the commission. We've made some slight adjustments to hopefully accommodate those. Specifically, Commissioner O'Malley had a question about the requirement that these food trucks operate on a paved surface. We've rethought that and we've come back with the requirement that they be on an improved surface, which would include crusher fines or permeable paving surfaces that we might find at some of the county's facilities. So I'm hopeful that that addresses the concerns. And with that, I'll stand for any questions the commission might have.
Are there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I want to, I want to thank Mr. Hamm for making that amendment to the, to the code. I think it is really important. We still have a lot of surfaces that are still permeable, but can, you can put a truck on them, a lot of parking lots and things like that. So I appreciate that flexibility there. Thank you.
Okay. Julianne, is there anyone present to speak for our public hearing on this item?
Madam Chair, nobody signed up for this item.
Okay. Is there any more discussion or questions on this? Or would anyone like to move to approve?
I'm of approval, Madam Chair.
Okay. I'll go ahead and second that. And so all in favor, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboa.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Pescotti.
Aye. So-called, and that passes unanimously. So moving on, don't worry, Madam Clerk, you're going to get your chance again. To zoning code amendment, craft distiller and restaurant liquor licenses. Nick Hamm or Lucas DeFoya to present?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, thank you for your report on the previous item. Nicholas Hamm, again, zoning administrator here to present item eight. This is eight E. And this is another proposed amendment to the county zoning code that would allow for distilleries to operate in the county C1 zone, similar to breweries and wineries. And that would be permissively with a restaurant and conditionally without. And also to update the county's requirements around restaurant liquor licenses to allow those establishments to sell spirits in a consistent manner with recent amendments to the state law regarding the Liquor Control Act and the ability of a restaurant to sell, excuse me, liquor in their, in their license premise. So this again was introduced at the October Board of County Commissioners Administrative Hearing. There were no suggested changes to this item, so it is in its form that you originally saw it in. So with that, I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
Okay, are there any questions? I'm seeing no questions. Julianne, is anyone signed up for public hearing?
Madam Chair, there is no signups for this item.
Okay. In that case, I'll just go ahead and make a motion to adopt this ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. All in favor, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboa.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Pescotti.
Aye.
So-called.
Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Moving on to the next one, zoning code amendment, cannabis regulations. Nick Hamm or Lucas DeFoya to present?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Nicholas Hamm, county zoning administrator here again to present item eight E, or excuse me, eight F. This is the proposed ordinance specific to cannabis regulations in Burnaleo County. This item was introduced at the November Board of County Commissioners Administrative Hearing. And there was some input from the commission. We've also listened to public comments. I've interacted more with members of the industry and just constituents generally to try and come up with some compromises that would address some of the concerns that were raised with the original draft. Specifically, we've now added a section of this ordinance that would allow for special use permits to be sought under certain conditions. And so that would address the concerns about some of these vertically integrated businesses not being able to perform a number of the operations on a property that meets the county's criteria. And another item that I wanted, or another idea, I suppose, I wanted to propose to the commission is to consolidate the allowance of the consumption areas to just be the C1 zone. The current draft makes a distinction between medical cannabis consumption and recreational cannabis consumption. And after listening to some of the folks in the public realm and in the industry, it feels to me to be appropriate and consistent with county code to allow for the consumption areas to be in the C1 zone irrespective of the type of cannabis that's being consumed. So I did want to offer that as a change that we've made tonight. That's not in the current draft, but it's relatively straightforward. It would just remove the language about medical consumption and just replace it with cannabis consumption. And that would allow both recreational and medical type of consumption to occur in the C1 zone as a pharmacy as an analog for the medical cannabis and a brewery or a distillery as an analog for the recreational use. And Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Okay. Are there any questions from the commissioners at this time? I'm not seeing.
Madam, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Mr. Hamm, and I know that Enrico also had conversations with folks as well. So just to highlight, if someone wants to do something a little different, there is that ability to ask for a special use permit. I think that that clarifies, I think, a lot of concern, or that addresses a lot of concerns. So that's, that's good. So I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, it would allow for a special use permit to be considered in the same way that other special use permits are considered in section 18 of the zoning code. So it does offer discretion to the decision-making authority, be it the county planning commission or the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner O'Malley or Mr. Hamm, can you give an example of what you're talking about?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, certainly. Let's say, for instance, that I own 10 acres of property and I was an A1 zone property and I wanted to produce cannabis, which would be allowable in the A1 zone. But as part of that, I also wanted to process that into some type of consumable, a gummy bear, a concentrate, something along those lines. This would allow the planning commission or the Board of County Commissioners to consider that as an additional use through a special use permit, which could also, it also enables that the same decision-making authority to impose conditions of approval that they deem to be relevant to safeguard the community more broadly. And no matter what the use would be approved, the county would also impose the codes that are relevant, such as the building code, the fire code, public works, street standards, things of that nature.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, also to respond to the, to Commissioner Benson, I think that's very important because this does give some control over the, for the planning committee and also for the commission under certain circumstances. And then it also gives us the opportunity, as was mentioned, if we think there are certain things that need to be adopted code-wise or otherwise, setbacks, landscaping, those kinds of things, we can impose that. What it just really does is there is an opportunity for someone to apply for this. It doesn't mean necessarily that they're going to get it, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Barboa, I saw your hand up next.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I just wanted to appreciate and I support Mr. Hamm, the part you were talking about, just taking out the medical consumption. And mostly, I mean, when I just appreciate it myself, but I think also we don't want to get in the business of regulating where we're monitoring or asking for people to, because I don't believe that's county business, right? So I just appreciate that. I'm not sure if we need to officially amend it or just accept it for tonight's vote.
Yeah, let's get into that at the end. I see Commissioner Casada has his hand up. And then we have to do public hearing too, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My only question would be, so if they had a special use permit and they were making cookies or whatever, or oils, how was, what's the rule on them transporting that somewhere? Or taking it out to stores? Or are they able through that special use permit to do that also? Or do they still have to hire out somebody to transport any edibles or oils or whatnot?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, I believe that would be, the function of transporting would be regulated by the state of New Mexico, but the special use permit provision that we've added would allow for someone to roll that specific activity into their application. So it would depend on the type of transport. I believe that the state law, when it talks about couriers, it's talking specifically about delivery services. I don't know that it would prevent, for instance, a producer transporting the goods that it produces to a processor, a licensed processor. But admittedly, that's a bit of a gray area for me. I will try and get a better answer for you. But I can say confidently that the proposed amendment that we have in front of us tonight would allow for someone to apply for a number of uses that are allowed in the cannabis ordinance with, as opposed to just the single one that would be allowed in their underlying zone.
Okay. Thank you. And Julianne, is there anybody signed up for public hearing?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two who have signed up.
Ooh, okay. And I want to call those in.
Okay, first.
One minute?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So the first I have is Jeanette Curtis, followed by Erica Roland.
Hello, my name is Jeanette, and I'm really happy to hear Mr. Hamm talk about the special use permit. I actually had a lot of stuff that I wanted to say, but his special use permit would actually build a bridge to allow some of the things that I think are needed, which would be to allow for manufacturing and outdoor consumption possibly on A1 commercial, A1 zone. So that's all I wanted to add because it sounds like Dr. Hamm has got this, Mr. Hamm's got this in hand. And I think everybody asked relevant questions. And it looks like Mr. Hamm is going to follow up some more. And I think that's really important because we need to have that bridge so that we can essentially build on this economic opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks. Erica Roland.
Hi there.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Erica Roland, and I live at 8334 Second Street. I want to thank you for your time and consideration this evening. I was not aware and I am grateful to Mr. Hamm for adding the special use permitting allowances. That's near and dear to my heart. These regulations seem extremely limiting to me personally and potentially for other entrepreneurs in the industry. For example, Mr. Casada's question about couriering. As a farm, under these regulations, I would not be allowed to take my product to anywhere to sell it. I would not be able to move my product off my property without a courier's license, and it's disallowed under these regulations. So I am concerned. I'm concerned about the limitations. So the special use permitting will be helpful, however, limiting on time-wise. So it'll give us a six-month delay and potentially some disallowances anyways after hearing, as far as I understand it correctly. Also, I'm very concerned with outdoor consumption not being allowed. The indoor consumption-only language is very restrictive. As a medical cannabis patient, we've been consuming outdoors, you know, for, since time has begun. And for us to be forced in a fishbowl, so to speak, or back in the cannabis closet is, is something I'd like you to consider. You're going to be.
Your time, Ms. Roland.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for your.
And I think that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Nick, did you want to address the issue about the outdoor smoking?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, certainly. Well, so I'll do my best to try and address all of Ms. Roland's comments as best I can. And first, I'll get into the consumption question. So under the current draft, what we're trying to regulate here is licensed cannabis consumption areas. So these are businesses that are specific to consumption of cannabis. And the county was trying to strike a balance between allowing New Mexicans to consume a now-regulated product in a, in a safe and legal manner, while also balancing the needs of the existing community more broadly. So the county is not saying that you cannot smoke cannabis for your personal purposes. This ordinance does not get into individual New Mexicans doing what they see fit in the privacy of their homes. The regulations regarding the cannabis consumption areas are about specifically the businesses that will be for people to go and consume cannabis products legally in New Mexico. And so the thought of the zoning department and planning and development services is that we create a space where someone, if they elect to consume smoked flower, that it be done so in a building and behind a carbon filter, but, but not that it's not allowed. And as this industry has evolved, there are many other ways to discreetly consume cannabis that this ordinance would allow for broadly in the C1 zone. So getting back to the proposed amendment that I discussed in my initial presentation is that the C1 zone would then allow for all of the types of consumption, be they medical or recreational. I think Commissioner Barboa's comment about the county not getting into the minutia of, are you a patient or you 21 years old, is very sound. And I think that that's, that's something that I was thankful to learn throughout this public comment process. So, but there is, responding to the request of the commission, there is a requirement that if you're going to smoke the flower, which has an odor and is potentially intoxicating by secondhand inhalation, that it be done in a building and behind a filter. But it doesn't preclude one from doing that as part of a cannabis consumption business. It just puts some foul lines into place so that that other businesses that can operate in the C1 zone aren't affected by a burden of being next to one of these businesses. And I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. Commissioner Benson.
Mr. Hamm, you're going to have to clarify this for me because I really don't know. But I remember when Chama River Brewing Company, we, my friends of mine and I would smoke cigars in their, in their restaurant. And then we weren't allowed to anymore because of an ordinance that was passed that it had, like, the sale of tobacco had to be a certain percentage of your revenue in order for you to be able to consume it in the, in the restaurant. So it just went away. And so, and I get it. A lot of people don't like the smell of cigars. So it makes sense. And people don't want their kids smoking cigars and enjoy a cigar once in a while. But no harm, no foul. So but this isn't more, I mean, this is kind of along the same lines, right, in terms of, it's not telling people that they're not allowed to smoke cannabis. It's just trying to direct the, or protect folks who don't want to necessarily be breathing it. Much very similar to cigarettes or other tobacco consumption, is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, so the state of New Mexico in, also is adopting the cannabis law. They created an exemption in the state's no smoking law that would allow for designation of cannabis consumption areas indoors. So what the county's ordinance seeks to do is to create consistency with that ability to, as you stated, create an environment that's separated from the public broadly, as this is still a controlled substance and it has some intoxicating effects, so that adults can do that within a building and behind a carbon filter. So if a business elects to allow for cannabis smoking indoors, the county's ordinance and the state law regarding states' smoking laws would allow for that to occur.
Okay. So actually, then, by the state law, would it be easier for a business to allow smoking marijuana than it would be to allow them to smoke cigars? than it would be to allow them to smoke, uh, cigars?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, I'm, I'm probably getting outside of my sandbox a little here, but, um, the, the exemption to cannabis consumption areas appears to be very broad. The except exemption for tobacco smoking appears to have a, a bit more restrictions associated with it. But I would take that with a grain of salt. That is certainly not my area of expertise.
Okay, um, I appreciate it and I won't hold you to anything. Um, but I hope anybody who's concerned about these limitations recognize that, uh, it's harder to smoke a cigar than, uh, than is this. So, um, all right, that's fair enough answer, Mr. Ham.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, if I, if I might, I just wanted to offer, uh, to Commissioner Casada's question earlier and to Ms. Roland's question about transportation. To my knowledge, if you're a licensed producer, I believe that you are allowed to, as part of that license, transport your products to a facility. So the, the courier service is again specifically to the businesses that are only involved in home delivery, if you will. So the, the Uber Eats or the DoorDash of cannabis that we might see come about as this industry evolves. But this county's ordinance is not, it does not intend to, nor does it in its spirit or, uh, its spirit preclude a licensed producer or processor or dispensary from receiving or transporting goods as their state license would allow for.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Nick, for, for all of that information and all that clarification. I, I appreciate, I appreciate all your work on this. I know you've been answering a lot of questions, um, on this, so thank you. And, and I, I also heard what you said at the beginning that, um, you know, these, these ordinances, they're, they're evolving documents. So if we see something that needs to change, it's, it's possible to amend it later on, right?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, this is a specific distinct separate section of the code because of that reason. This is an evolving industry and it wouldn't surprise me if we are back in this ordinance making adjustments in, in the near future and, and beyond that as well. So, um, I, I, I approach this with humility in mind. I think there's much to be learned from both my perspective, the public, the industry and, uh, I'm listening to the community and the commission and, and I will do my best to address the needs of the community as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. So now on to the next question that, um, Commissioner Barboa brought up earlier. There, it seems like there are two amendments at this point about the special use and the, um, s- smoking in a medical, near a medical combined facility or could, could you state what those are and what we do with, with those amendments?
So Madam Chair, if I might, um, the one amendment is to adopt the section specific to special use permits. And the second amendment that isn't in the draft that's in minute track this evening would be to, um, allow for cannabis consumption areas for either medical or recreational. So said more simply, just cannabis consumption areas to occur in the county C1 zone.
Okay, okay. Um, and so do we vote on each of those amendments and then vote on the entire ordinance at this point? Can you lead us through the process, please?
So Madam Chair, I'm actually going to defer to, to either Julianne or Mr. Martinez on the procedural question. But, um, if I have questions for me, I, I'm here for, to help.
Okay, thanks. Um, Ken, do you want to lead us through that?
Yes, Madam Chair, I think you have it right. Uh, we would vote first on each amendment and then you would vote on the ordinance as amended. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So I think we can move the amendments and I think Nick's already described both.
Okay, um, Commissioner Barboa, did you want to say something?
I was just going to move, trying to.
Oh, okay. Do you, do you want to take it away? Do you want to, first of all, do the amendments, move to approve the amendments?
Yeah, and can I do both at the same time, I guess?
And can we do both at the same time, Ken?
Sure. As long as everyone understands what the two amendments are, they've been stated. I think you can move the two amendments and then we would then move to approve as amended, depending on the outcome of the amendments.
Okay, so Commissioner Barboa moves to approve the amendments as stated. Um, is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. Thank you. So all in favor of approving the amendments as stated? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Barboa?
Hi.
Mr. Benson?
Hi.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Hi.
Vice Chair Casada?
Hi.
Madam Chair Piscotti?
Hi.
So call.
Do you want to move the whole ordinance, Commissioner Barboa?
Wonderful, yes. And my, I am happy to support the, um, and ask for approval and move, um, forward with the adoption of the ordinance on cannabis regulations from the county.
Okay, who'd like to second it?
Second?
Thank you. Commissioner Casada, you're a little slow getting in there. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll for approving the entire ordinance as amended.
Commissioner Barboa?
Hi.
Mr. Benson?
Hi.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Hi.
Vice Chair Casada?
Hi.
Madam Chair Piscotti?
Hi.
So call.
Okay, thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you again, Nicholas Ham and everybody, Enrico, everybody Lucas who worked on this. I know it was a, a big task, so thank you.
Madam Chair Commissioners, thanks for your support.
Okay, moving on now. Oh, Madam Clerk, please provide resolution numbers for the following items under nine A, B, C, D, and E.
Yes, ma'am. Nine A is AR twenty twenty-one dash one twelve. B is AR twenty twenty-one dash one thirteen. C is AR twenty twenty-one dash one fourteen. D is AR twenty twenty-one dash one fifteen. And E is an AR twenty twenty-one dash one sixteen.
Okay, thank you. So the first one up, uh, is something that I think a lot of people are interested in. Our twenty twenty census data, Burnaleo County redistricting proposal. Ken Martinez will introduce and Brittany Poss will present.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Uh, this is our twenty twenty census data redistricting proposal. I want to start by thanking, uh, Madam Chair and staff and everyone that's helped, uh, put this together. It's a big undertaking. Been working on it for a few months now, so, uh, really done well, I think.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, sorry, Mr. Martinez. Madam Chair, um, Commissioner Casada?
Uh-huh, go ahead.
Uh, before we get to the presentation and, and us look at this, um, I, I would like to ask for a deferral. Uh, and I'd like to explain, uh, my reasons why I would like to ask for a deferral of this item.
You know, I, I support your, um, wanting to ask for a deferral. I, I just kind of feel like we should have a presentation first, though.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but we're gonna, you're gonna give a, a presentation on the C3 map and I would like a, I'd like a deferral because, um, I, I'm against the C3 map. During this process, Madam Chair, I, I didn't know that I could actually, um, um, have some input on, on really making change in, in the district. I, I have a lot of heartburn that I could have actually, uh, created some, uh, West Side Commission seats. As you know, and, 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 and I have respect for all the commissioners, uh, up, up here. But as you know, uh, I'm the only commissioner that lives on the West Side. And through this map, you could possibly have zero commissioners, uh, living on the West Side, uh, coming up at the next election, uh, when my term is, is up. I, I find that, that when I was going over the maps, nobody told me that I had the opportunity to do that. I was just trying to, I was just going along with the people and they were, as they told me, well, we could do this or we have to do that or we have to live within these bounds. Uh, and I've been working with, uh, uh, Ms. Poss, uh, on, uh, on some other options that we can look at. And I'd like to defer it for a week, uh, because not only that, I was in a neighborhood association meeting last night where they didn't even have any, any chance for input. We've had no chance for input on the Southwest Mesa. Uh, we're setting up, we have an opportunity here to really change the, the dynamics of what a county commission is and to have county commissioners who come from one side of the city to be able to fight for that type of the city. As you just saw earlier, Madam Chair, um, I got outvoted because I'm the only West Side Commissioner here. We don't have full representation and we have a true opportunity to do something, um, um, very important to the West Side. You're gonna hear comments later saying, well, I, 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 I support the West Side or I do the West Side. But that doesn't matter. If you don't live in the area, then why do we have districts? I could just say, well, I want to run for the East Mountains because, and it don't matter if I live there because I support all of Burnaleo County. That is an unrealistic statement that's about to be made and it makes no sense what forever, so ever for us to have an opportunity and not at least look at it and not have an opportunity to look at it. I, I'm asking for an opportunity for us to look at what a real map would be of Burnaleo County with having at least one complete commissioner from the West Side. We don't have that opportunity with this map. We haven't even explored that. I believe I was manipulated and I was bamboozled through this process. And I would like a week for me to be come up with a map so I could present it. I have a preliminary map that Brittany could put up, but I'm telling you, I need a week to make sure that we keep everything that's, that's state regulated and, 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 you know, and all these different rules that are in place. That could still be accomplished by creating a map that is fair and equitable to the people that I represent here on the West Side. Because I don't think that you all want to be the commissioners to say, well, we don't care about a commissioner on the West Side. We don't care that in an election, there could be absolutely no commissioner who lives on the West Side to fight for the West Side. I believe we, we have the opportunity now to change that. And I would like a deferral and I'd like to have a vote for a deferral. So we could at least give me a week to show you what that would look like and what that means to this side of the city. Madam Chair, every time I have an agenda item put up on this agenda, I have to defend it with every bit of my being to get it passed or not get it passed. Cause I'm the only one who lives up here. I'm the only one who really cares about the West Side. And I think it's unfair for this county commission to make that the status quo. And that's how we do business and that's business as usual. How can we keep doing that? That's unfair and I think it's unconstitutional and I believe, you know, they should sue us if we do it. So I, I would really, before we look at C3, I would like the opportunity to show other opportunities to this commission. Cause perhaps maybe I might change some minds. But if we vote on this tonight, Madam Chair, it is over, it is done for the next 10 years. And the only place it's going to grow in the next 10 years, Madam Chair, is on the West Side.
Okay, you know, um, I, I hear what you're saying. Um, you've used, you've used some really strong words, like feeling you believe you've been bamboozled and that you haven't had a chance, that there hasn't been time for public hearing. So I think I'm even more inclined to, as the chair, to say, let's hear the presentation first and see if, I mean, that, those are strong accusations. So, um, I would like to have the presentation first. I believe there are people here to speak on behalf of the West Side, um, the one district concept. And so how about if we take all that into account first and then decide what to do? I, I'm guessing there's people here who don't even know what we're talking about because, um, I did see an email come in last night. It was fourteen minutes to midnight um, about all of this on the day before the meeting. And, you know, we have certainly been very transparent for the past three months, if not more. People knew this was coming up. So I would like to hear the presentation first, listen to public hearing and then see where we go from there. Commissioner O'Malley?
Thank you, um, Madam Chair, and I appreciate that. We will hear the presentation and hear from folks who have waited all this time to speak. Thank you.
Okay, um, so, um, Ken Martinez, I know you were beginning the presentation, so please.
Yeah, I'll try and be brief. And of course, this is a commission action. And we, of course, defer to the will of the commission. The, uh, twenty twenty census data redistricting proposal, we started this probably around the summertime. I started in my office, uh, earlier because we had to do contracts to bring in our, our professionals. We were lucky to get research and polling and they're great and they do most of it for almost everybody. And everybody knows them. We were super lucky, I believe, to have Brittany Poss from Research and Polling assigned to us. Madam Chair, thank you and your staff and, and Julie, uh, Morgasbaka, thank you. The redistricting, uh, website is directly under the county manager, uh, so that it's been up and apparent since October. Um, and we wanted to make sure we had the concept maps up there and we wanted to make sure every commissioner had an ample opportunity, uh, to, to, to look at them and work on them to the extent that maybe all of that didn't happen. I apologize. Try to do better. Brittany has been great as she is, every time I said, can you please meet with a commissioner or can you look at a concept? You've had an immediate turnaround, even as she was working with the legislature and Congress and everyone else and all the other. So I'd like at this time to turn it over to Brittany.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Good evening, councilors, commissioners, I'm sorry. We are in the middle of the state legislative redistrictings and my brain is just a little bit scrambled. But I appreciate the opportunity to be with you all tonight and to talk about Burnaleo County, which is where I live and, so if you don't mind, Commissioner, I'd like to share my screen and, and hopefully I can just walk really quickly through the proposed, um, uh, C3 concept. So this obviously is the county. We've, uh, split it into five districts. Um, and this, uh, concept C3 is really a status quo oriented plan. It, um, the goal was to change the lines as, as little as we could while still, um, achieving the ultimate end of redistricting, which is, uh, one person, one vote and equalizing population. So the, the proposed boundaries are in yellow, the existing boundaries are in blue. So you can see, you know, under this concept, we really didn't change the boundaries very much. I can show you, uh, exactly where the boundaries are for each district, uh, starting with District One. District One, um, is mostly a West Side, North Valley district. Coming along, uh, outside of Intana Ranch and Paradise Hills. District One, uh, comes along, uh, Paseo del Norte, crosses the river into the North Valley. Uh, one change that we've made to District One is to, uh, move the boundary from I-25 to San Pedro and McKinney. Um, and that was really primarily to equalize population in District Four, which was, um, the only one of the five commissioned districts that were, um, that was over the plus or minus five percent ideal population for a district. Um, District One then comes along I-25 here, um, and takes in part of the, the northern part of downtown. Comes along Central Avenue. Under this concept, we have District One, uh, coming down Unser, um, along Central, so we go up Unser, uh, to I-40 and, uh, and then District One takes into Hajuli. District Two, uh, under concept C3 is really a South Valley district, also including Mesa del Sol and the Isleta Pueblo. So you can see the boundaries between Commission District Two and Three. Our, uh, District Two takes part of, uh, downtown, the southern part of downtown, a little bit of East San Jose. Comes along the, uh, railroad tracks essentially, um, and taking in this, um, the southern part, uh, south of Bridge and, um, and the entire South Valley, the incorporated and the unincorporated parts of the South Valley. Uh, District Three is, um, was changed just a little. was changed just a little bit. I'm gonna throw the, the current boundaries on again. Um, what happened with District Three was it moved east to pick up, uh, Barellis um, and the Kirtland addition and part of East San Jose. Um, and it moved a little bit, uh, east to take up some population as District Five came in and took, um, uptown into District Five. Uh, so I can show you a little bit closer on that. Um, but the core of District Three remains the same in sort of, um, the UNM area. Includes the international district, but you can see here we've moved the boundary from Louisiana to Wyoming and, um, from Louisiana here, sort of jogging along, we've moved that to a straight line along San Mateo, uh, up I-40. Uh, District Four, uh, remains really similar, uh, to how it is today under concept C three. Uh, takes Paradise Hills and Ventana Ranch and then crosses the river uh, to take the northern part of the north valley and, uh, and most of the heights up here. Um, most of the northeast heights. And then finally, District Five, uh, really remains a, um, uh, an east mountains district and comes down, takes in four hills and again, um, uptown. So, uh, Madam Chair, with that, I will, um, pause for questions, comments. Um, I think that's the overview.
Okay. Um, let's see. I, I know we need to do the public hearing. Julianne, would this be a good time to do the public hearing or should we pursue questions from commissioners at this time?
Madam Clerk, I think after the presentation, it's, um, usually processed that we go into public hearing and then any questions after that. At your discretion.
Okay, um. Yeah, let's go ahead and do the, the public hearing.
Okay. So for the redistricting item, we have 12 signed up.
Okay.
And just a reminder, you all have one minute to speak. You will be timed and I will call names in threes, starting with Elizabeth Haley, followed by M. Ward, followed by Jacob Cumbaladio.
Good evening. Uh, may I start?
Yes, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair and the commissioners. My name is Elizabeth Haley. I'm the Vice President of the West Side Coalition of Neighborhood Associations. A resident of Burnaleo County and elected, uh, Special zoning commissioner. Was gonna rep- represents most neighborhood associations located on the northwest Mesa. Uh, about, above, before, about central to the Sandoval Line. I was really surprised to hear, uh, Commissioner Casada talk about last night's meeting as a, uh, community meeting. It, it was actually a meeting that a, um, that a lobbyist scheduled using her own Zoom account and over the objections of the Wisconsin Executive Committee. Um, in fact, we felt we were astroturfed. There was a flaw in our bylaws allowing such a meeting. Um, also attending, uh, were state, uh, Senator and a representative that conducted the meeting in the place of the, uh, Wisconsin Executive Committee. Um, the sponsors were co-opting our group as a method to submit a resolution to the commission to dis- this districting process using unvetted data paid for by an undisclosed benefactor. Our organization voted with our feet. Members left, broke the quorum and the resolution could not pass. A transparent process was used to vet.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry ma'am. We're coming up on your time. You'll have to finish.
May I finish my sentence? The push to adoption was not transparent. Please respectfully approve the C three map. Thank you for your discernment.
Thank, thank you very much. Who's next?
M. Ward, followed by Jacob Cumbaladio, but for the record, he's not on, followed by Joseph Galant.
Okay, M. Ward.
Commissioners, at an earlier meeting, when you discussed redistricting maps, I was genuinely impressed by how all of you appeared to appreciate the importance of your task and work together in a collegial manner to make the necessary adjustments while adhering to your public obligations and stated goals. Collectively, you worked toward a consensus map. All of you were sent a video of a meeting that took place on the west side last night on the subject of a late hour redistricting map. At timestamp 59 minutes, 13 seconds, Commissioner Casada makes the following statement. Everything that I've tried to do on the west side has been fought against by all the other commissioners. This statement was striking as I suspect each of you can recall an instance of supporting a district to request in some form or another. Please adopt your previously vetted C three map with or without tweaks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, who's next?
Joseph Galant, followed by Andrea Serano, followed by Virginia Davenport.
Thank you so much, Chair, members of the committee. Um, I, I, uh, members of the commission. Um, I was going to give a little bit different testimony, but, um, in light of the statements given here today, I would like to speak, um, that Commissioner O'Malley has answered my calls every time I have called and I'm on the west side of District One. Um, I am west of the river. I think it is important to note that um, I have not had, uh, problems being represented in the commission and in fact, I would like to applaud her exemplary efforts in that regard. Um, so I'd also like to just state that in recreating the map presented by, um, Conservative, uh, Vodder. Um, I have found that the Hispanic voting age population in District One appears to drop below 50%. And I know he uses Hispanic population, but voting age population is the standard considered by the courts in many cases. And I believe in this county commission, uh, we should have two Hispanic majority voting age population so that, um, Hispanic voting power is not diluted. Thank you so much. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Who's next?
Next, we have Andrea Serano, followed by Virginia Davenport, followed by Frank Comfort.
Good evening, uh, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Andrea Serano. I'm a lifelong resident of Albuquerque and I currently live in Albuquerque South Valley. I am speaking in support of Concept Map C three, which was a month's long public deliberation. As the first speaker noted this evening, the map that's being, uh, presented by Commissioner Casada was written by consultants for a very large developer in the south valley, um, called Santalina. And I think we can name that and we can call it that. I find it hard to believe that a sitting commissioner doesn't understand how redistricting works. I find it hard to believe that this is a genuine process. And I believe that what should move forward is Concept Map C three, which has public input, which has been done in a public process and will benefit the people of Burnaleo County. Not a map that was sent out 14 minutes before midnight and no one has even seen the map. No one's had an opportunity to review the map and it was presented under false pretenses that it came from the neighborhood associations when it did not. Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you. Who's next?
Virginia Davenport, followed by Frank Comfort, followed by Barbara Baca.
Okay, Virginia Davenport.
Hi, uh, first off, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Um, I did just want to speak out in favor of the C three map as well. I am a west side resident. And I believe, uh, allowing new maps to be admitted at this late hour would be unfair to the public who has been previously allowed to vet and comment on all other maps submitted. I also believe that this process is clearly outlined on your own government website and that C three should be going forward, especially since the additional session was vetoed and did not occur for second round revisions. Um, thank you for that and that is all.
Okay, thank you.
Frank Comfort, followed by Barbara Baca, followed by Kathleen Adams. I too see Frank Comfort on. He's unmuted.
So, sorry. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The Littlewood Neighborhood Association is a registered association with the city of Albuquerque with the Office of Neighborhood, uh, Coordination for about 32 plus years. And after reviewing, uh, the redistricting map that your Burnco website and also, uh, saw a little bit of, uh, a map that was presented last night at the director called Wisconsin meeting. I believe they called it like C four. Uh, we're gonna, so I can get this out. We support redistricting map C three at this point. We've seen a lot of issues over the years. I'm not real happy with what, with everything that's out there. And I do believe we need more representation on the west side. I don't believe what we have today at this point in time is very good. Unfortunately, we'll have to wait another 10 years. I'd like, too bad we can't do something sooner. But we need to at least have enough more representation, more seats on the west side. Not just mad jury-mandering basically the, uh, the district map coming up in, uh, I-40 North and so forth.
Okay, thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Barbara Baca, Barbara Baca, followed by Kathleen Adams, followed by Miles Tocano.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Baca. I live in the Pat Hurley neighborhood on the west side adjacent to the river. And I urge your support on Concept Map C three, which provides for the principles laid out in the redistricting report. I'm a lifelong resident of Burnaleo County and my family has lived in District One for generations. My father, Pat Baca, represented District One on the city council and county commission for 20 years. This just district has always included the west side and crossed over the river to include downtown and the valley. The redistricting principle of communities of interest includes shared characteristics and political concerns, including history and language and sense of place. I believe there is a true shared history along both sides of the river. There is no need to divide the county as eastsiders and westsiders. The river and its bosque should bring us together, not separate us. Therefore, I am not in favor of the very newly developed map or the so-called Santalina map, which appears to be developer-driven. Um, we need county representation who understands this and can advocate for our community as a whole.
Running out, Ms. Baca. Okay, thank you, Ms. Baca.
Kathleen Adams, followed by Miles Tocano and Maureen Storin.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Adams. I'm the President of the West Side Coalition. I would like to thank you for the work that you have put into redistricting. I endorse the immediate adoption of map C three. What is the most important factor to me is that this process was transparent and it allowed for community input. You do know that was, there was a very special meeting of the coalition last night. It was planned, scheduled and conducted by three members. The meeting last night was done without any input from officers of the organization. Commissioners, this was not a balanced meeting. The attendees were lobbied. They were not informed. I expect the actions of my elected officials to be ethical. I want to be assured that they are, have no personal or financial interest in the issues they work on. I hope that is true for all of you. I wish that I could believe that that is true for the present, presenters, sponsoring members and the participants at the meeting last night. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Miles Tocano, Maureen Storin, followed by J.D. Matthews.
Okay, go ahead, Miles.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Miles Tocano. Um, I'm a resident here in Burnaleo County. And I'd just like to share briefly while I'm, uh, giving my toddler a bath that redistricting is all about people and the community. Starting with the process of ensuring that people were sent, filling out their census um, to the entire process around getting that data and utilizing it. Yeah, whoa. Um, and getting that data into maps. I firmly believe that Concept Map C three, uh, should be adopted here today as it's had the long process of being involved in and with community and the people having their input on those, on this map. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Who's next up?
Maureen Storin, followed by J.D. Matthews.
Okay, Maureen.
Hi, I live in northwest Albuquerque. My request number, my request number one is that you vote only on a map if it has had plenty of opportunity for public scrutiny and input. You've been going through this process for months, although that has received little news coverage. And also, if Commissioner Kazada didn't know that he could submit, suggest or initiate, then that is his failure to learn during his years as an elected official. Thank you.
Thank you. And J.D. Matthews.
Hi, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name's J.D. Matthews. I'm a resident of unincorporated Burnaleo County. Northwest is on my address. I want to thank the commission for your weeks and weeks of work, maybe months at this point, on this process of drawing maps that have taken into account many different perspectives across our county. Of the maps that have been up for public scrutiny, on the public redistricting website, it seems that the best option is map C three, the one on the agenda tonight. It's a disappointing end to the so far public process to have a map submitted minutes before midnight last night. I urge the commission to finalize the decision tonight and don't push new maps without public analysis and debate to a decision in the middle of a holiday season that keeps many people busy and not fully paying attention to special and unscheduled commission meetings. In September, Research and Polling shared a PowerPoint with the commission that included next steps, develop map concepts based on commissioners and public input. September, the people of Burnaleo County deserve a transparent process. Thank you.
Thank you. Julianne, is there anybody else or does that conclude public hearing?
That concludes public hearing.
Okay, thanks. Um, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, have I submitted a, uh, Ms. Paz, have I submitted a map? Have I, have I submitted an alternative map?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, uh, we have worked on maps together.
Have I submitted a map?
Uh, tonight, tonight.
Yeah, or you asked tonight at midnight.
Uh, not that I know of, Commissioner.
Yeah, no, I have not submitted a map. And what my ask was is that we have an opportunity because I've met with so many different neighborhoods on the west side. If we're gonna bring up the Wisconsin meeting, uh, four people left. Eight of the people asked me if they could go back to their neighborhoods and, and talk to their neighborhoods about, uh, the whole process. That's why I was bringing that up, that we could probably use another week to look at another option. I'm not saying that C three is one way or the other. The reason why, Madam Chair, I felt bamboozled is I didn't, I thought that all I could do was move a block here or move a block there. Um, you know, uh, and so that's what I was trying to do initially. Uh, and that's why when it came down to when we thought we could, when I, when I learned that you could really, really make some change. Um, that was never presented and I'm just asking for an opportunity for us to look at what real change would look like. Just, you know, this has nothing to do with my experience as a county commissioner. Um, this is the first time I've been involved in a redistricting. Um, I think that's, that could be said for, uh, uh, you know, most of the commissioners here. Um, and so maybe bamboozled was a big word, but I just felt like I was, it wasn't transparent enough for me to say, hey, these are the things we, we can do. Um, these are the things that we suggest you do. Uh, all I got was, hey, this is what we're looking at. This is, these are a couple of options. And they, they were very similar. They weren't huge different life-changing types of, um, of, of redistricting. I didn't know, and excuse me that I didn't know, but I didn't know that was part of the process that I could do. I think I have a strong case about representing the people of the west side. Every time I try to do something, Madam Chair, it's always about Santalina. Um, no, when I, when I, when I pushed Sunwest down into the south valley, I got a bunch of emails from some of the folks saying, you're doing that for Santalina. So no matter what I do, it's about Santalina and it's not. This is about representation, true representation of a county commissioner that represents the west side. I think that the east mountain has that. I, and, and nobody says anything about the east mountain having two or three different, uh, commissioners dipped into that. Uh, all I'm asking for is fair representation. It has nothing to do with being able to support a corporation or supporting someone, uh, you know, an agenda. Um, it's still only one vote out of five votes on, on the commission. It's still only one vote out of five votes on the commission. I don't say that you don't support me. I didn't say that. I say that every meeting, I seem to have to defend everything that I put forward. We could go back in the meetings and look at them if you'd like. I've been doing this job for five years. I know what I have to do every time I do a meeting. I have the gray hair to prove it. So all I'm asking for is a fair one week, maybe even Wednesday or next Tuesday, to be able to have a week to meet with more of my constituents, more of elected officials on this side of town. And I'm telling you, I have a lot of people saying, maybe we should look at that. They did it in Santa Fe. They took a seat from the east side of the river and made it a seat on the west side of the river because they felt, because of the growth, that they needed that type of representation. I'm asking for that. I'm asking for us to be able to look at that. If we don't, it's 10 years down the line for that to ever have a chance to do it again. But for the record, I did not submit a map. That's why I'm asking for a deferral, so maybe I could submit something that and if it doesn't work out, and if it doesn't look like I can do it, and it doesn't adhere to all the rules that we comply with. You know, for someone to say that the same needs for the other side of the river are the same needs for this side of the river, obviously don't aren't involved in what I have to do every day. They don't get the calls and the emails I get from constituents every day. And that's not their fault. I get that. You know, we all live in our bubble. Unfortunately, I don't get to live in a bubble. I represent and fight for adamantly the part of town where I live, the part of town where I grew up. And I believe now that I have an opportunity to do that, that I'm just asking seven days to do that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner O'Malley, I saw your hand next.
Thank you very much. I think to cry foul at this point is just really disingenuous. And that's very frustrating to me. And I'm very disappointed, really, because there has been a process to say that the Commissioner says that, you know, he was bamboozled initially or he didn't know. I mean, I'm sorry. I'm going to give Commissioner Casada more credit for being, you know, more aware and smart. Because he is. The people who spoke and the people that I represent on the west side of the district, who have been very supportive, and I've been very supportive of them. They came forward today to speak. They're also sending in emails. That includes Senator Pope, who represents the west side. It includes Representative Joy Garrett, who wrote a letter in. All these folks are saying, you know, we saw the process, we participated in the process, we're good with the C three maps that I thought we had this real collegial sort of process going on. Mr. Martinez was working with us and, you know, working with Ms. Pass to see that we had our needs met. The district that that this new map, if you will, changed dramatically was District one. This is a district that Commissioner Casada does not represent. His district on the southwest side in this new map is intact. District one is the one that gets the biggest hit. It turns, the North Valley then gets split up between two other districts. And the south and then basically the District one becomes entirely on the west side. To what benefit, you know? And fortunately, you know, I did have folks speak up at this particular meeting, which was basically rammed through. I mean, it just is. I mean, you just have to listen to the to the recorded video of what happened. It was, you know, let's slam this through at the last minute. Let's put a wrench in this at the last minute was basically what was going on. So that we could either get a deferral, you know, or try to get a new map in. That's very, you know, I don't like that kind of, I don't like those machinations. I don't do those kinds of things. I mean, we all, in good faith, met with Brittany, talked to each other, every commission meeting, back and forth. We had access to the mapmaker. And in fact, as you will recall, we had some early maps that did include different scenarios, very, very radical scenarios, but those were like, you know, let's, they didn't meet some of the criteria that we had. So we went back and said, okay, what what needs to happen? District four needs to shrink. Let's work together so that we can make those boundaries work. So to say that, you know, it hasn't been fair, I mean, really. And then I think the issue of, I bring this back, the people who spoke today, the representatives, the West Side Coalition represents 20-something neighborhood associations. One is in Commissioner Casada's district. The others are in mine. You know, they want this map. They support this map. I think a lot of it is this assumption that if I live on the north side, I don't care about the west side. That's basically what I've been, I was told at this last meeting. I was told by a couple of elected officials that I did not support the west side or help out the west side. And that's just not true. I've put resources in the west side. I believe in planned growth. I mean, there's no question about that, you know. But I saw this for what it is. I thought it was, you know, they hijacked this group. The members left because they were disgusted with the process. That's what happened. When it came up for the vote for this new scenario, you know, they're like, we're out of here. You know, this, and some people told me, I've never, in fact, they said that at the meeting, I've never been experienced this kind of disrespect, you know, for not only me, because actually I was added to the agenda at the last minute. You know, the agenda was this new Rodader, who's a mapmaker, followed by Commissioner Casada, followed by Mo Mo Estes. That's basically what the deal. I was able to speak in between. And basically what I ended up was sort of defending myself that I lived on the north side, you know, or I live in the valley and therefore I don't, you know, I can't represent the north side. It's like saying, if you live in the east mountains, you can't represent people in the city of Albuquerque. Because your district, District five, comes from the east mountain. That's what it, that's basically what you're saying, you know. So for me, you know, this new map, Commissioner Casada was happy with it. Because, you know, it meets his needs, but everybody else's map changed. Everybody else's district changed. I'm sorry, I do not buy this whole, oh, my gosh, you know, for us, first of all, there's a lot of resources that are going into the west side. A very good example is Amazon. We're putting a lot of money into the infrastructure out there because we want to encourage more jobs on the west side. So we don't have this back and forth where people have to cross the river. Good jobs, that's what we want. There's a lot of development occurring on the west side. In fact, there's more retail on the west side than there is in the north side, in the North Valley. And to say that, oh, you know, we're under, we don't have enough, you know, investment, if you will, right? I don't know where people are, go to the North Valley. I take pictures of neighborhoods that are very, very poor, where their infrastructure is terrible. Well, we've had a lot of infrastructure issues and needs. It's all over, right? And it's especially in the pocket of poverty in the in the international district, in the South Broadway era. These are areas that need a lot of support and a lot of help. And so, yeah, there's some resources that are going there. Thank goodness that they're advocating for folks, you know. The new development, it's getting the support it needs to move forward in an incremental way. And I believe that's important. But there's a lot of new development out on the west side. And it's going to continue to occur. But a census is a is a count in time. You know, it's what we, what exists now. I was kind of surprised in Benson's district that it, you know, really increased by a significant proportion. And that's because there's growth that can still happen on that side. So first of all, I really am very, very disappointed that, you know, that I, you know, that first of all, that I was quite frankly attacked in some ways at this meeting. And my record was, you know, disputed as a representative for the west side, which I think was really wrong. I have family that lives on that side. A lot of family, and I'm just really disappointed that it was characterized that I don't care about the west side. We worked on these maps. All of us had the opportunity to say something. So what does a deferral do? Okay, let's talk about that. I think that is part of this strategy. Let's defer, right? Let's defer. And when someone says, you know what? And maybe this sounds very, very selfish, but we're in the middle of a holiday, right? You know, the idea to get all this stuff out of the way was to do that early before we run into Christmas and New Year's. And so I, I'm sorry, I just, I'm not sorry. I mean, I'm just, I'm upset, actually. And I'm insulted by some of this, but what happened at the meeting last night and by some of the comments that were made, I think they were totally unfair. We've had a fair process. We, I don't believe that we should defer. We've all worked on this map together. Let's just get it done. Let's get it done. And that's what I'm asking is that, that, you know, we just, we just vote on it tonight and get it done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You, Commissioner Barbo.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and for everyone that took time to call in tonight. I'm just like, I think I want, I'm all about transparency and I'm an organizer for all of my life. So I've had been forced in that process to want to create change for my own communities, for the communities I work with in the nonprofit world that I work with, that we have to follow process. We get asked by many of these same legislators to make sure we use the correct titles, that we're addressing leadership in the correct way. And so I take those things seriously when I get to this position. Not because I want to force communities to do that, but because if I believe in democracy and I want to be part of playing this game, I think I have to. So because I often feel like people that those processes aren't transparent enough, I took extra work to make sure that when we did have the opportunity to talk with Brittany Pass and Sanderoff, the company that was helping us support these maps. I asked lots of questions. I asked, you know, I also feel like, you know, recognition. I was glad to hear tonight that folks recognize the census and all the work that communities put in to make those census numbers happen. I know during one of the meetings, we heard pretty loud and clear that we always feel like census isn't undercount, especially when it comes to South Valley. And so, you know, yes, but we, it's what we have again in this structure to play off of. So the only, I want to end my plight for transparency, right? The only district that actually had grow through the census numbers was, you know, Commissioner Benson's district. And that's where we move, we decided to move from. I remember that there was some maps that Brittany had first presented in the commission meeting when I was like, oh, my God, those are too much, right? And I was thankful that she was just giving us some options of both sticking with sort of the way we already had maps with little changes. And she presented some ones that were, to me, in some ways outlandish, or, you know, really pushed pushed us all into sort of pushed our districts in new ways. And so because I also believe in public transparency, I made sure that we sent out emails to my districts, that I put up social media announcing that we were going to be talking about redistricting during the previous commission meetings, which I believe October 12th, November 9th, and November 15th were all places where people had public opportunity for public comment. And because, and I want to be thankful to Commissioner Casada that I asked to actually include, and just to correct a little bit, because Brittany had said that in my new map for my district, I adopt Barrelas. It's not Barrelas, it's South Broadway. I know she's in a million meetings right now and can't remember every little particular community. But I asked to adopt South Broadway because I am in this, it's the neighborhood I grew up in. And I think it adds to the population. We all go to the same schools. We all sort of shop and do our commerce in the same areas. So, but also with that, I ask Commissioner Casada's permission for to push those boundaries. But I also reached out to leaders like I know, like Diana Dorn Jones and the United South Broadway Coalition. I reached out to businesses like Nexus and others in the area, letting them know that I would be their new commissioner should the the maps that we vote on and that I'm hoping for pass, right? So I think I just want to name out so clearly that public participation is important to me and how we let people be engaged in this process. So I, because of that, I feel like I've, you know, done my due diligence to really make sure and bring in as many folks as I could about the things I was hoping to move and hoping to secure for my district in this redistricting process. This is a 10-year decision, so it weighs heavy on me. I'm not taking it lightly. And I think also, you know, and some, the last thing I guess, I think, well, two things, I guess, I didn't hear much from the folk in the public comment time of folks, why this fails. And I hear Commissioner Casada, but I don't see the problem that we're addressing that causes emergency or need. And I also worry what that means for South Valley residents. I often think of hearing it proposed that the river is what divides our our social determinants of health and equity. I always think of central and that south of central is really the dividing line where our economies, our resources, our opportunities are where we see the decline. And so those are important to me, and I don't see the river as a total, as that barrier. So I just wanted to name those things. And lastly, I'd say in my own plight to do better by indigenous communities. You know, I think I haven't also heard from, you know, knowing that Tahajali is a big part of the current Commissioner O'Malley's district. You know, I would want to, if I, you know, I would want to hear if there was problems from them in representation. So I guess that's, those are the pieces that I feel I want to be very clear that I think transparency and public opportunity has been there. And I myself have reached out to gain it for my district.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, before I start, Commissioner Barbo, can you just clarify what you were saying? I appreciate what you were saying, but I wasn't quite clear in what you were saying about transparency and deferring the vote where you're.
My most, I guess, like, a lot of the context for a reason for deferral was because there wasn't enough opportunity for public to be involved. And I guess from the, and that is almost the first thing I think of in any, any one of our votes, like, who do we need to contact? Even with the pilot, that was, if you remember, the first time we voted on pilot, I asked, how does the reservation and that Native American-owned gas station that is right across the street from where this pilot will be, do they have problems with it, right? So I guess that's what I'm talking about is that is everybody fully aware? Are we doing our due diligence to make this publicly aware? We, you know, that public has the opportunity to be involved and that the process is transparent, is what I was getting. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have some comments. And thank you, Commissioner Barbo. So man, I don't even exactly know where to start. I think I'll start with, in order as best as I can remember, with Commissioner Kizada. I have voted with you often. And sometimes I'm the only one, and I'm at the opposite end of the city from you. So I don't live on the west side, but I'm pro-growth and I'm pro-business. And I know you are too. And I and the west side's where it's at. That's the only where, that's the only place we're going to grow. And we have to grow or we'll continue to shrink. And all the surrounding states will continue to suck all of our children away with more and better opportunities and more development and more businesses, which we don't like to bring here. And so we've got, we've got to do that, which is why I align with you so much. I, yeah, I don't live on the west side, but I feel like I represent the northern portion of the county, which that's kind of how I see it is. I recognize the directional difference west and east and west side is where our homes are. And we've got disproportionate number of homes to businesses, which I'm trying to change. I went to school at Marie Hughes. Some of my best friends live on the west side. Then, all right, so. Then, all right, so just to clarify, then. So I don't even know why I was attacked during this meeting, but then a lot of callers were calling in. Um, or a lot of the attendees saying that this is a, a secret uh, conservative push. I'm the only conservative on the, on the commission. If that's a conservative push, why am I not the one pushing this? Why, why? I haven't even seen this map that everyone's seen, that I have not. I don't even know what map you're talking about. So if this is a conservative push, why am I not the one doing it? Why am I the one um, bamboozled? Uh, I know you, you took that word back and I'm not using it either, but um, for people to attack Commissioner Kassada saying that he's uh, being conservative, give me a break. Come after me for that. Uh, and and I'm not even gonna, that's not who I represent. I represent all the parties from progressives to ultra conservatives. That's who live in my district and so I'm representing them all, trying to reduce crime and increase jobs and uh, high paying jobs and um, and oh, yeah, yeah, somebody else said that um, this uh, uh, there are a lot was said by a lot of people. All this being said, yeah, I do feel like this, I agree with you, Commissioner uh, Barboa, this was a, I think this was a transparent process and um, it, there should have been more people opposing map C3. If uh, if there's that many people opposed to it, that being said, we defer votes. We've done it before. Um, and if there is something I felt strongly about deferring something, I would ask to defer it. And that is democracy and that is representation. And so I don't think there's anything wrong with that. So um, yeah, I disagree with a lot of the statements that were made, they're just black and white statements. So, but I also respect the request to defer a vote. That's it, Madam Chair.
There it goes. Okay, thank you all for the comments. Um, I guess now it's my turn. Um, first of all, I was honestly really surprised at the public hearing because I was expecting that there would be people in favor of this new West map and I don't think I heard anybody speak in favor of it. Um, so that surprised me. Um, and that, that obviously, you know, impacts me a lot, that I heard a ton of support for the C3 map, that people really like it. So um, I'll be honest with you, the only support for the, this new West Side map has been, well, from you, Commissioner Kassada and two other people. And so um, yeah, yeah, I don't feel swayed at all to even look at it. Um, I, I saw Commissioner Benson, you raised your hand. I want to just say something. I have not seen the map um, either. I don't, I don't know who has seen the map. I see Commissioner Barboa shaking her head. Did you want to say something, Commissioner Benson? Or do, did you want to just pop in there?
Yeah, no, I do. I, another thing that uh, I don't like getting pushed around. I don't like seeing, I don't want my constituents pushed around. I don't like to see my friends here on the screen being pushed around. Um, uh, people were saying that this was a, a, like an illegitimate request and, and I was thinking, I read Joe Monahan regularly and he has commented often quoting uh, House Speaker E-Golf, who, who has made it clear from the beginning of the, from the last election that he, his intent was to manipulate the districts. So that the Southern District wouldn't be won by a conservative again. And I'm here to say that that has not happened. And I'm, and again, conservatives were being accused of trying to do this. We've got one conservative on the commission and um, and so, yeah, I haven't seen that. If, if that was the case, I think Commissioner Kassada would have been moving. Well, I don't know, it depends on if he's aligned with conservatives or if he's, I don't even know what the insult was addressing. Um, but uh, yeah, to have concerns at the last moment, I think is this is a 10-year decision. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. And, and if there was a move to uh, manipulate this stuff, I think that would have been happening for the last several months, along with the State House, which has been Joe Monahan blogging about all the time and uh, the Albuquerque Journal does as well. So um, that's not what's happened here. And uh, yeah. This is a, this is a big decision. So deferring the vote. I think it's fine. And, and, and I'm saying that after I felt like I was pushed around and my constituents were pushed around that, you know, that we're not like a unit by block during the last several months, back to Commissioner Barboa's position. I have had a lot of feedback from my constituents, East Side and West Side, telling me, whatever changes, I just want to be in your district still. Now that's from Westsiders. So that being said, this is a big decision and I don't take it lightly. So um, yeah, I'm just kind of frustrated with the whole uh, situation and um, just these verbal bombs are just being lobbed back and forth.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I wanted to continue on. Um, you know, first I want to say that being the chair this year, um, you know, I took that very seriously and when Ken Martinez, you know, Brittany Paz, Brian Sanderoff came to me. In fact, we talked about this process. I don't know when. I remember it was early, early this year in the springtime, maybe when I first brought it up. I asked Ken Martinez, our county attorney, how does this work? What do I need to be thinking about? Because I wanted to really create a smooth process for this and I, I'm, I'm proud of, you know, the part that I played in that and the parts that our partners played in that. Because, yeah, we met for the first time, I don't know if it was in September, it was definitely in the fall. And so we talked a lot about how to be transparent with this and, you know, we came up with um, the webpage. We, I asked to put that entire video of Brittany's presentation on our page so people could see that and watch it, people who maybe missed our meeting. Um, you know, we had just tons of ways that people could give public input from on that page, typing in their comments, leaving voicemails that would be transcribed and given to us. So um, I know we're, there were press releases. I think I was on, you know, I did media interviews a couple of times. It was all over my social media for people to give input. And so um, I personally, I, I find this move to be disrespectful to the process. Um, because, yeah, you know, it's, it's, it's 10 years and did people just figure out last night at 14 minutes to midnight that they wanted to do something drastically different in the county? You had 10 years to think about this and you had a solid three months to look at the maps, to make public comment. So I'm not really inclined to you know, to get back into this. It's something that was decided 14 minutes to midnight. And as the commissioner, I was never sent this map. Um, the other thing that really kind of bugs me is who's paying for this map? Apparently there is a map that no one has seen, that several of us commissioners have not seen. And who's paying for it? Because Burnaleo County is paying Brittany Paz and Research and Polling to do this for us. So I don't know who's paying for this map. I don't, you know, does Rod Adair live on the West Side? Is he a constituent of the West Side? No. Does he live in Burnaleo County? No, I don't think he lives in Burnaleo County. I think he lives in Roswell. Is he a young person trying to build his portfolio by volunteering his time to make a map? I don't think that's true either. So um, you know, it really bugs me that the money that the county paid to go through this process, that's taxpayer money. I don't know who's paying for that other map. And that really bugs me because we represent our people and we are good stewards of taxpayer money. And our people are the ones who should have the biggest voice. And, you know, again, I don't know all the details, but in my mind, a corporation, a development company does not have a voice because it is not a person and it is not a constituent. It might have a voice in another way, but as far as this goes, you know, in my mind, that's where I stand on that. So I, I find this really disrespectful is the bottom line. And so we have followed every process of transparency and all those other tenants to the letter to come up with the map that we have that I've heard so much support for the C3 map. And so Commissioner Kassada, you certainly have a right to ask for a deferral. I know that I will not be seconding that motion. Um, but I, because of this is the democratic process, that's, that's fine if you want to make that motion. Again, I find it disrespectful during the high holiday season to ask your fellow commissioners to work on this new map that, you know, I have no idea how it affects the people of my district. You know, this is a jigsaw puzzle. The pieces have to go somewhere. So I don't know anything about how it affects my district or anybody else's district. And so asking the commissioners, asking constituents to give their feedback when honestly, I just haven't heard a lot of support for this new map and there was plenty of time to provide public comment. Um, I, I cannot support this. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have my hand up.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I respect everybody's comments. Um, you know, we have to start thinking outside the box. Um, you know, to wait for the last hour, I mean, I've done it before. I've even brought things back that uh, uh, Madam Chair wanted me to bring back. After they said, don't bring stuff back, we've worked hard on it, we've put thousands of hours in this and guess what? I brought something back as the chair and we fixed it. Um, well, maybe I wasn't the chair at the time, but I, I did bring something back and we fixed it. Uh, it was the paid time off. I don't know if you remember that. Uh, when they told us not to do that, that they had already done the work and the work was already done. And they were mad that we did it and I wasn't quite sure about it. And I went back and I did research and I looked at it and I found to be, it to be a fair and equitable amendment to the paid time off ordinance that we did pass. Um, I work all the way to the last minute. I'm a worker. I'll work through the holidays. I work no matter what. My job here is to work, work, work and to represent my districts. So um, there is no day off for me. Um, there is no uh, holiday to say that I don't work during the holiday. I don't have that. Uh, even as, even in my business as an entertainer, I work throughout the holidays. Um, that's just my job. That's just my work ethic. I may be different. Uh, but I like to, I like to, you know, make sure that I've made the right decision. Um, Brittany, is map C3 status quo?
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Kassada, yes, I would characterize C3 as status quo.
Okay, um, and so uh, we didn't really think outside the box. Really, right? So I don't know, do we, do we really put that much effort into it? Do we, do, do we, do we really get a whole lot of feedback? I mean, I, I hear Madam Chair say she didn't hear anybody and I'm, I, I've heard in the last couple of weeks, hundreds of people saying, we need a West Side commissioner. It would be great to have a permanent West Side commissioner that, 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 that wouldn't take no risk in, in a, in an election. Um, you know, some of the people in public comment are actually running for office, Madam Chair. Uh, their interest isn't about uh, what the West Side does, you know? Uh, because, because status quo always gets support. Uh, nobody ever wants to really think out the box, you know, some of this, some of these comments that came from people during public comment, in my opinion, were, were set up. We've heard that before. Me and you've experienced that when we listen to public comment before. Um, you know, some of these people are running for office. Some of these people have different agendas and it's not about the district, it's not about, it's about winning an election. I mean, you know, that's part of politics, but that's what also happened uh, this evening. Um, so we know that. Um, but I respect everybody's opinion. I respect the work. Uh, I never said that I didn't respect the work or the process. I just felt that I didn't have the opportunity um, to think way out the box. I was just trying to play within the lines. And when, when it, when it occurred to me uh, that I could do that, I started working with Brittany. I don't, I didn't even really look at that map last night. That's not the map that I'm looking at. Uh, so whoever spent their money on that map, I have not worked on that. Uh, I had not, no input on that. The only thing I had a conversation with Brit- Brittany was is, what if we did think out the box? What if we did have a West Side commissioner? It doesn't necessarily have to be O'Malley's district. It could be my district that could be West Side and maybe we move District 3 into the South Valley and, and I move a, a little more going north to the freeway. I mean, there's other ways to keep our, our vote together, to keep it a Hispanic majority, a minority majority vote that has the same interest. That's all people ask for when they ask for representation. Do they have the same interest? I mean, I've supported plenty of things uh, in other districts. Flix Brew wouldn't be there without me. I'm the one who brought Flix Brew in and did it. It's not in my district. I worked really hard on Tahajali, as you all know, to bring water to Tahajali. It wasn't, it wasn't my district. I hadn't been doing it. But I put the organization together to get that to move forward, to move that in a different direction. I get that we work on other parts of, of, of the district and that we do. And I feel that this commission does represent Burnaleo County. But there is a distinct difference between your district and where you live and how you really look at Burnaleo County as a whole, whether you want to believe it or not. It's truthful and it's not disrespectful. It's just the way it is. I've lived on this side my whole life. We've been underrepresented my whole entire life. We're looking at ways to make an equal playing field. With that being said, I won't have any more comments. I respect what you said. I respect all my commissioners. Um, I think they all work hard. I think they all uh, you know, do their due diligence. All I'm saying is I didn't look at that. And I was asking to be able to look at that. And if I can't, you're right. I have 10 years to change that. Um, and if it, and if it moves forward. I do have an amendment. If this fails, I do have an amendment which will help me get to my goal as a West Side representative. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Um, so would anyone like to make a motion?
I already moved for a deferral. Um, it could fail without a second.
Okay. Commissioner Benson?
Seconded it.
Okay. Um, all in favor? Okay, and Madam Clerk? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Barboa?
No.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley?
No.
Vice Chair Kassada?
Aye.
Madam Chair Pescotti?
No.
Go call.
Okay, thank you. So the deferral fails. Um, and a two, three. And so would, I'll, I'll just make a motion for approval of the C3 redistricting map. Is there a second?
Madam Chair? Madam Chair? I have an amendment that I would like to bring forward.
Okay, and for the record, Commissioner O'Malley seconded that. Um, okay, Commissioner Kassada, what's your amendment?
So Brittany, we have that amendment uh, going from I uh, going all the way to I-40 down to answer? Is that the amendment that we're, we're, that we worked on?
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Kassada, yes. And uh, with your permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to show that on And, uh, with your permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to show that on the screen.
Uh huh, sure, please.
Just give me one second. And, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Kazada, would you like me to explain this or would you like to talk about it?
Sure, you're the, you're the expert. I guess we're paying you, paying you a lot of money, let's go, girl.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner. Uh, so essentially, uh, so this is, this is the map, uh, we're sort of tentatively calling it C four as an amendment. Um, everything in this map is exactly the same, including South Broadway. I'm so sorry, Commissioner Barboah. Um, the only change that this makes is, um, to, to adjust for the population of bringing South Broadway into District Three. Um, rather than taking this section of, uh, population between I forty and, uh, Central. Actually, I'm going to put on this, the green that's going to pop up, these are the boundaries of the proposed concept C three. And so we had taken this section here from District One and put it into District Two to adjust for the population of losing South Broadway, uh, from District Two. And instead, under this amendment, uh, we would take this section instead. And what this is, is, um, this is Coors, two I forty and the river and Central. And so this is enough population to, um, equalize the districts again and allow South Broadway to move into, um, Commission District Three. And I can show you just, just very quickly, so that all of the deviations are still well within the, the legal limits.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a carve out that unfortunately is very, in my opinion, very political. Uh, the person that is looking at running for this seat that a lot of people know lives in that, that particular precinct. And it's well known that she's looking for running for the seat. She spoke earlier, her name is Barbara Baca. And I find it interesting that basically her precinct is now in Commissioner Casada's district. I think that's very intentional. Uh, I, 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 and this is this last minute thing that affects my boundaries, which I, you know, again, I will have to add the word disrespectful. Uh, you know, everybody knows that that's happening. And interestingly enough, she gets cut out. I did make the, um, the, uh, changes to that edge, uh, to allow for, that's that Unser. Uh, Brittany, if you want to put that, it's still, that was that Unser piece, that, that growth piece, if you will, that community that, um, uh, Casada represents now. Uh, uh, that he's on Long, see Central down there where he's got Ninety-Eighth Street and all that with a boundary? That makes more sense to take that. Um, and because I have the other, you know, boundary, which is closer to Old Town and West Old Town. That makes sense to keep that in my district. Rather than grab that piece right there next to the river, it makes sense for me to have that and keep that. And then to further on, let that, uh, be, and I agreed to that and I thought Commissioner Casada agreed to that. Uh, that's the area that I would be giving up. So if you're, if you're giving up a district or a precinct, you know, you should have a conversation with somebody about it. You know, this is this last minute amendment, again, and, and I know why it's being done, I'm not stupid. Nobody else is, I know why it's being done. And, uh, I, I just, I, I can't support it. Uh, why, why didn't Commissioner Casada reach out to me? Oh, I want to take the other, another boundary away from you. I want to take this precinct. We've been in conversation, we've been in conversation with Brittany Pass. I can't support this at all. I, I just, I'm very disappointed that it even came forward. The map C four as, I mean, C three is already put together, it's fine. It takes care of the issue of, of the population and everything else. And I ask that you not support this amendment, Commissioners, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Um, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Casada.
Uh, everybody knows I'm not political, I didn't know her, what's her name?
Oh, really?
Excuse me, excuse me, Commissioner, I have the floor.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize my microphone was on, I apologize.
Uh, I, I didn't know she lived in this commission, uh, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I didn't know that. Um, that's the area where I grew up and it's more in the South Valley, uh, and considered the South Valley than, than the North Valley. That's the area I grew up, I thought since Commissioner Barboah wanted to represent the places where she grew up or my, where my mom lives, where, where my family's from. Uh, and we were doing boundaries and I was trying to get to a thing. I thought that would be a perfect, fair compromise for me to be able to represent that district. Uh, I did not know, and I, I swear on the Bible, I did not know where that candidate lives. I did not know that. All I'm trying to do is carve out what, what Commissioner Barboah did. And that was to, um, find a way to represent an area where my mom and my, where I grew up, where my grandma grew up, where all my friends grew up. That's all I was trying to do there, that, I am not a political person. Everybody knows I've never done political moves. Everything I do is about representing people and representing my constituents. Uh, and, and for, for her to say that is very disrespectful, uh, because she doesn't know that. Um, unfortunately, I hadn't had a chance to talk with her because I was talking to constituents who wanted to make a West Side Commission District. So I was, I was, I was meeting with elected officials and community members here, uh, all day, uh, as I worked. And I've been doing it for the last week. That was something that I was just trying to do. Instead of giving me the, uh, an industrial area that does not make up for votes in my district that I'm losing in South Broadway and, and, uh, East San Jose and the Kirtland Edition, if you look at my numbers, those were my highest numbers as an elected official. And, and I'm giving them up. And I thought it would only be fair that I get those votes back for this district for somebody who's going to run on the West Side. Because again, we haven't, we, we may lose any West Side representation. They, they, they represent it, but they don't live there. And I'm sorry, you could tell me all you want about I represent and I don't have to live there, but it's not truthful. It's not really truthful, because it just depends on who you get to in office, right? Now I said, I respect all the commissioners here and I know they do that job. That doesn't mean who's coming next is going to do that. I have to look at that, I have to look at the future of my district and my people and, and also as we run for office. I did not do that, that was not something that I did purposely. To manipulate any kind of election, that is a false, an untrue statement. And I take offense to it very much.
Commissioner Barboah?
Yeah, I think just because I, uh, I want to be again, comment because it's been brought up, right? That the parts that I asked for are, are feeding some of this. I wanted to be really clear that, yes, this is the neighborhood I grew up in and I feel, um, but, and, and that matters to me. And I mentioned that because I think community and our families matter. But really, I'm, I'm, you know, I have three years left, hopefully, if I run for reelection, maybe a seven years. I know that this goes beyond me, this goes 10 years. And my thoughts in adopt, um, wanting to bring South Broadway into my district was because I feel like that it is more really, I don't feel like South Broadway is that relatable to South Valley voters and doesn't, so I just want to be clear that those were my intentions. Also because I care and have family and grew up with the people that have been in this area. But that it's not like, obviously, my time will come and pass. And so I, I am, I want to be really clear that I'm thinking in the intention of those families that live in South Valley, in the South Broadway, often I feel are more relatable to southeast part of Albuquerque. Um, as we, like I said, we shop, go to the same schools, sort of commerce in the same areas. So that's just what I wanted to be super clear about, that I'm not just, um, making those decisions based on family. Cause I, so I just wanted to, to have that clarity. Um, and I do honestly feel like, you know, and Commissioner Pescotti made, um, you know, took uptown or, and I, I don't, I don't even know what language to use when we're talking about take, give. Cause these aren't our districts, these are the communities' districts. And, um, and yeah, when I, I thought, I even thought when Commissioner Pescotti was, um, you know, asking for that uptown area, is there, um, something I should worry about for my district? Are they, are we losing income or revenue or representation of a certain population that we'd be amiss by losing that uptown district? And so again, I reached out to Communities, District Seven, City Council District Seven, others to make sure, because we have had three months in this process. So, um, so that is, you know, and I, and I heard from District Seven, City Council District Seven folks that they, you know, you know, that they, they were, they had concerns and they were going to try and reach Commissioner Pescotti. Um, so there was never, uh, um, I guess I haven't heard any alarms until this moment. And I haven't ever heard somebody say like, you know, the county lines are so messed up. Where, the way I've heard things in the, um, in the state process, right? I'm like, folks know I'm connected to the state legislative process through my nonprofit work. And I heard so many reasons why folks were moving and negotiating and, and trading barriers and, um, taken into consideration. But I just have not heard that and I didn't hear it again tonight in the public, um, public option point. So with respect to everybody, right? I'm an organizer, so if I had an important vote tonight, I would make sure I had representation of that vote tonight to say, to commence, to persuade, because I do believe we are representations of our folks. But when we have something that's critical and going to need time for people to consider, then I really want to hear the public's voice on it and I haven't heard that this evening. Um, so it's, it's hard, I want to support and our commissioners and have good relationships. Um, I just don't, I haven't heard the need for the change, for emergency or for where things are, um, are not moving in a way that we feel we can have control of our own districts. And much of the conversation tonight frankly, makes me think about the South Valley and where is that representation? Not saying, I, I know you live there, Commissioner Casada, and that that is your district and lots has happened previous to me coming on here. Um, but right, we, we had a whole bunch of years when, you know, Commissioner Argila Cruz represented just the South Valley. Um, so I guess I just, yeah, in the conversation of all, it just, I, I'm, I'm, I feel bamboozled that I don't know where the problem was coming from, because I feel like we've had a lot of time. And I've sought out public comment, obviously not for my district. I just want to make some clarity points on this.
Okay, thank you. Um, and yeah, I, I'm, I'm feeling the same way about, you know, even just this amendment that I haven't heard any overwhelming reason, um, why this should happen. And, um, yet even though I'm, I'm on the east side, I, I just haven't heard from people on the west side saying that they really want this. So, um, yeah, I'm kind of stuck on, on, I guess just being surprised about this amendment. Um, Commissioner Benson? Oh, I'm sorry, I saw Commissioner O'Malley, I know you had your hand up and then it went off and then it went on again.
Sorry, I, I've, you know, got the, the dog and my daughter and she's leaving and stuff, so there was a little bit of. Um, so as you mentioned, as mentioned, Barbara Baca spoke, she spoke about where she lived and the importance of keeping that within the map, the original C three map. I think it's very important to her, she's been a long time. She mentioned she's, you know, lived there for, an Albuquerque resident for generations. Her family is actually associated with Wado Foods, her uncle is, I believe, the owner of Wado Foods and her father did serve as a county commissioner. She wants to remain in C three, in the C three map, she wants to remain in my district. As a matter of fact, recently, we had an event, uh, on the Asecas, uh, and it was really a positive event. She's worked very hard as, she's now the, uh, Director of the MRGCD. And she's very familiar with the river and the agricultural areas in the valley. And of course, she's a big, strong West Side supporter. This would take her out of my district. She does not want to be out of my district. That precinct is very important to me, because that precinct is a strong precinct for District One. Uh, so I, I, you know, this sort of last minute thing, you know, based on really nothing and nobody's asking for it, I think is wrong. And so I'm asking you not to support this amendment, thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, so like I said earlier, this is a 10-year vote. And because of that, it's a big vote. And I think, uh, each of us has the responsibility to voice our concerns, um, vote in favor or vote against, ask for deferral. The reason I agreed with the deferral earlier is that if there is more information, I want to make sure I have it. Um, that vote lost, but, uh, to vote on a new change like this, uh, as an amendment that I haven't had a chance to look at or analyze the numbers or, uh, really analyze anything about, none of us have, that, um, and we have analyzed all the other maps in the, uh, C three that we, uh, were going to vote on tonight. Yeah, I can't, uh, can't vote in favor of, uh, this amendment.
Okay. Um, so Commissioner Casada, I see your hand is up. Do you want to make one last case or would somebody like to make a motion?
No, I mean, my only case was what it was, you know, I'm, I'm giving up, um, votes. Um, so I'm losing those votes and I won't gain those votes in an industrial area that they're giving me. Um, you know, uh, that's why we have Brittany Pass here to go over that. That's why we're in a meeting, uh, to ask questions, to get data. Um, you know, uh, I don't understand why we can't do that, but no, I'll just, I'll have to defer to the will of the commission. Uh, and I'll have to explain why, um, you know, for the next county commissioner who runs for the seat, how I gave up a lot of votes that are big and strong for, uh, district, for my district, uh, and not, and didn't gain any. Um, all I have is, all they're, uh, cutting out for me is an industrial area that, uh, as you know, doesn't have any votes. So it is what it is and, you know, uh, uh, I'll continue to represent my district the best way that I can. And, uh, you know, just, uh, I'll have to take responsibility that I just didn't do enough of my homework on the redistricting. Uh, and, um, you know, uh, I probably want to have to do it again, uh, because I'm termed up. And I just got to pray that next election, uh, you know, we keep somebody who is on the west side. Uh, and that lives on the west side and, uh, will fight for the west side. And, uh, you know, and maybe in the future, we can, uh, do that. Because that part of, of, of the South Valley is in the South Valley. It's really not, it's really not the North Valley, I grew up there, that's the neighborhood I grew up in. Those people call me to get things done in that area, by the way. But that it is what it is, thank you very much.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Barbo, do you want to wrap us up here?
I just wanted to actually ask, um, Brittany Pass, because I, again, in all of transparency, I know as a, that I, I want to show the number, I want to, if we can publicly show the numbers of our districts. Cause we did like that, um, the idea that we're losing votes and not gaining, that was part of this process. That was, this whole process was based on the census numbers. So when we, um, yeah, with the precincts were included, voting populations for those precincts, right, Brittany? I guess I, I don't want to prolong the process, but I just, for me, the public that are watching this, I want to, for them to know what I know, I'm right.
So, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, yeah. Commissioner, I think, I think sort of the best way to look at this is, um, I just quickly looked at the population in this, in that area and, um, in, and I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Madam Chair, can I share my screen?
That. Um, yeah, Julianne, is that option available?
Yeah, I'm, I'm able to, yeah, I just, I wanted to make sure it was all right.
Oh, absolutely, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, this isn't it.
The taxpayers are paying you.
Okay, um, so, let's see, I don't know why it's not coming up. But the, um, that, that sort of piece that we had taken, uh, that, that we had moved from District One into District, uh, Two in order to balance the population. Um, I've got it highlighted here. Uh, there's, there's 4,362 people in this area, which is how we were able to offset, um, the, the similar number of people that lived in that area of South Broadway and East San Jose that we put into District Three from District Two. So, um, I, I think that this, this is a relatively high growth area and, and there are a significant number of, of people in that area today.
Thank you, Ms. Pass, and thank you, Chair. But I just wanted to be clear about how those are both part of the requirements of making the change. How those are both part of the requirements of making the changes to any lines.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kassada.
Good, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask uh Mr. Martinez if he heard uh of anyone that keeps certain. Boundaries for someone seeking office before.
So I wanna make sure I understand the question about people.
Yeah, they're 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 you know, they they wanna keep boundaries because they're seeking office uh and just for that purpose. Because uh and I wanna know if Brittany is any part of the you know redistributing uh principles. Redistributing principles.
I think um as a general rule. Uh the redistributing process tries to avoid pairing incumbents. So I I think that's what you're saying by keeping boundaries. And and the reason they do that is to avoid what could appear to be a partisan outcome. Or even an inter-party warfare, right, so. Uh a lot of times what you would see is people saying, well, I'm gonna redistrict him out of existence. We try to avoid that because the real process should be communities of interest. Uh and the whole all the all the things that Brittany listed for us, um that we were very careful with, so. Uh for the general rule, I think um. Honoring um current incumbency, if you recall, uh every time Ms. Pass showed us a map, she had a red dot or a red star on it.
But I'm just asking, is that is that a principle for redistributing?
I think it is a uh a goal insofar as it avoids what could be the appearance of.
Because that's what O'Malley stated in her early comments about the 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 district is that it's the the only reason why she wants it. Uh really is to uh you know, and we're not supposed to make decisions based on if somebody's running in office in that district. Um so uh I have, you know, I I'm telling you that that's uh uh. You know, I think if someone's listening out there, there might be a lawsuit coming. Brittany, is that a redistributing principle to do that?
Uh Madam Chair, Commissioner, um as as Mr. Martinez said, yes, uh pairing the not pairing incumbents. Is definitely something that can be considered and in New Mexico, it's definitely one of the um. The criteria of redistributing that is an optional thing to look at once the other um legal requirements are met like contiguity and equal population. And things like that.
But we shouldn't make decisions based on if someone's running or not for future incumbents, right?
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
I just wanna also that that was the word incumbent was me, Brittany talked, I just.
I don't mean incumbent, I mean somebody, yeah, a candidate running, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that.
I'm gonna close the discussion on this because I think this is really kind of veering off um. And I I think that it. Yeah, is just not really germane to this. To overall what I had been hearing about um whether or not to make that amendment to the map at this time. Um. So would anybody like to make a motion at this time? Commissioner Kassada, is your hand up? No, okay. Then. I'll I will go ahead and make a motion to a move to to approve map C three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley, all in favor of approving redistributing map C three. Please raise your hand and Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barbola.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kassada.
No.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
So called.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and that passes four to one. Thank you very much, thank you everyone for your work, for your discussion on this. And what I'd like to do now is just call for a ten minute break. And give us a chance to do what we need to do, get some refreshment and come back.
New Mexico Association of Counties had approached us and asked Burn Leo County if we would consider asking our commission to support this legislative initiative via resolution. So that's basically what it is. And like I say, there was, there was, there's consideration of not, this wouldn't be forever, but maybe some kind of a moratorium, maybe it would be a three or a five-year moratorium on existing legislation that prohibits para retires from coming back to the public sector. And I stand for any questions.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Manager Baca. So I've kind of missed the first part of that. So is this for public safety employees to be able to come back?
So, and that's a good question. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley. That's a great question. So we're not really sure where they're going to be going with this, but what we thought we'd do is just pass a resolution that supports kind of the concept of allowing retirees to come back to work because we're, we're losing a lot of seasoned employees, experienced employees, and employees just in general. We can't get people, a lot of times, we're trying, we're having a really, really hard time filling positions now. And so this would, I'm not, like I say, I'm not sure where the legislation would be going, but I think it's probably up to you all if you would like to just limit this to public safety. And like I say, it's just a resolution to support whichever effort you would like to entertain. So whether it be public safety or just all para employees, eligible employees to come back to work.
So, so I have a question because this has always come up in some way or some form, and I don't know if this would apply, but where people would come back, the retiree come back, but they still get retirement on top of their salary. And, you know, people saw that as kind of double dipping. So what, what does this mean really? I guess is what I'm asking.
Madam, Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, I think that's exactly what it is. So they would be able to come back to work. They would be able to collect their retirement and then collect their salary, but they would have to, they would have to pay into para though. So in a sense, it's good for the para fund because it, you know, there's, there's people that are applying, they, they still have to contribute to the fund, but that's exactly what it is. So just to be transparent, that's exactly what it is. And it's just an effort to get people into, you know, to apply for jobs and into the workforce, especially the seasoned employees that, that we're losing. And so basically, I think you, as you're aware, this was, I think there was some legislation that was introduced a couple of years ago just for public safety. So they're wanting to revisit this just because we can't get people to apply for jobs anymore, as you know.
Well, as you said, you know, you've got seasoned employees or you lose, what do they call that when people have worked a long time? There's something that you lose, I forget.
Institutional knowledge.
Thank you. Institutional knowledge, right? So, you know, so this is, if this went, you know, before the legislature, I'm sure they'd said everything, right? I'm sure they'd have all these conversations around, you know, should, should we limit to public safety? What does that mean, et cetera, et cetera? I think it's just, just a general rights resolution of support. Okay, thank you.
That's correct. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley.
Commissioner Barboa.
Yeah, I think, I think, and again, I am naive in the sense of para and retirement and when we lose the field, I've heard some things in surrounding law enforcement before, but not fully vetted. But I believe I support a temporary moratorium. I guess I mostly have questions about, does this pause? I feel like we're in a moment of pressure where both people aren't being hired, or people aren't looking for jobs. And in like Commissioner Benson talked about last commission meeting, right, where he can't find the staff to scoop ice cream, right? That's, to me, that's a different problem than having like where if we're having a problem with law enforcement or corrections officer, I think the biggest thing for me is MDC and correction officer staff that we're having a hard time that we have to be fully staffed. So I support that, but I also hope that it doesn't mean that we're not emphasizing the priority of making sure CO staff, which are different from ice scooping staff, ice cream scooping staff, right, are getting valid pay for the work they do because of, and getting increases in their pay while we're, so I just don't want it to replace that where we're able to get retirees in, and then we're not being pushed or pressured to really meet the needs of, I want to say specifically corrections officers who are dealing with the very end, that not even the police officers want to do, even police officers have a place to drop off their most troubled folks, right? So I guess that's, again, in my naivety, I just want to make sure that those things don't contradict each other.
Thank you, Commissioner Barboa.
I guess that if somebody else knows, or if anybody knows, like whether that is something that we, like a risk game, I guess I'm asking, maybe like if there's not, do we, do we lose that pressure when we are able to bring in retirees to do such jobs? And I guess, I don't know, maybe nobody has that answer.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboa, and I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand the question. And I do appreciate what you're saying. I, I think, so is this, are we talking about, are we talking about, are you concerned about maybe not paying the employees that haven't retired a fair wage? I'm not, I'm just trying to understand, I'm sorry.
No, no, no problem. No, I, I'm, anyways, to try and be more clear, that, that I, particularly the incidents I'm thinking of is the MDC. For instance, I know we've already done some work, we've already negotiated some contracts to get increases of pay, we've already done some bonuses and tried to, but we're still in the position as a county to fill a lot of seats. We're having a hard time with recruitment, even a hard time with retention. I literally received a call today from a wife of a CO officer saying how they, you know, her husband's been working there for over 20 years and, and that the pay has not reached, right? Where my son who works security for the last year now gets $17 an hour working security with little experience, and her husband who's been working at the, at the jail for 20 plus years is making $20 an hour. So I think there is, again, a big difference even between my own son, who I wish was making more. But I, I guess what I worry is that this filling it with retirees that of course, I'm, I want to respect their appetite to get the benefit of sort of getting both their, their retirement and work for pay. We all need that, I want to respect that. I'm sure it's, you know, workers, but I just also don't want the pressure of this moment in time when we're not able, what, what are we missing when we're not able to recruit and retain staff and we're required to run the jail? So I just, I, in, I am specifically thinking about that. Do we lose any, anything when we allow retirees to come in and fill those seats by pushing us to do better about recruitment and retention and think outside the box? Or how are we going to get there to recruit and retain specifically COs, officers is what I'm thinking about.
I see Chief Perez, you have your hand up. I don't know if you want to address this, so.
So, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I think that this is something that we do need based off of the number of vacancies that we have, but I also think we have to do it very cautiously if it is something that's approved, because it is just a temporary fix. I mean, ultimately, we have to be, find ways to keep ourselves competitive out in that market in the world of public safety, but in, in general, across the county, and I know HR is doing a great job at trying to do that now through the new leveraging that they're doing, but we just have to be careful that we don't put the retirees in and expect that to kind of fix the, the greater problem. And that greater problem is retention and recruitment. And we're honestly not doing the best job that we could do in that area. And it comes down a lot of the time to competitive pay. And you just said it, Commissioner Barboa, that your son's doing, you know, security for $17 an hour with very little skill, yet our corrections officers have to go through a full-blown academy, or SO has to go through a full-blown, full-blown academy. So again, I support it. I think it makes sense for where we are right now and our need, but I would caution us to be careful not to let this become the long-term fix to where now we don't get any of those younger generation folks in and give the, the folks of New Mexico an opportunity for good county-paying jobs. So that's my two cents on it. But I do think it is a, it is a good move right now to help us get out of where we're at now. But long-term, I don't think this is at all the fix that, that any of us are looking for necessarily.
Thank you, T-Paz. That's what I was saying, like, is this a both end or is it a actual hinder on our recruitment process? But yes, that's all it was. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I think I saw Commissioner Benson's hand next.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And Chief Perez, I've got to, I want to bring you back in this conversation. The, to Barbosa's, Commissioner Barboa's point, my, yeah, I'm hiring a ton of 14, 15-year-olds, but that's okay, because I'm a business owner, you just solve problems and you do pay more. And I'm paying a lot more than minimum wage because I can, because I'm a problem solver. And the county can't necessarily, but I had a 15-year-old with a gun to his head. We've had five armed, five armed robberies in the last month, well, actually the month before Thanksgiving. So, and, and this was APD's district, not Burn Leo, but I think a lot of the problems are the same. And one of the problems was that our employees run hold or ringing, calling 911 for four hours and alternating between 242 cops and 911 before they finally got ahold of a live person so that they could say, yeah, we had a 15-year-old with a gun to his face. And then they sent a officer two hours later. So I think we need to do this. I agree, it's not a long-term fix. I've got a, an idea to fix that long-term too, but short-term, we've got to increase the manpower. But I also want to make sure, Chief Perez, when I went on a tour with you to the different stations, we went to the call center, would this be in that? Because those folks are under an insane amount of pressure and stress, and they're the ones answering the call. And I'm not clear if they're considered emergency response.
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, so basically what I think the county managers put forward is that it's not determined that it's only for public safety. I think this could be a county-wide initiative. So if that's the case, then they would be able to come back into the 911 center. As you and I talked, my desire is to get the 911 dispatchers recognized as public safety employees through the state, and we have it on our legislative priorities this year around. But as it sits today, if this was only for public safety designated employees, the communications 911 operators wouldn't be eligible for it.
Thank you. Okay, so that's why I want to make sure, I'm okay just restricting it to public safety as long as we include the 911 operators in that sector, because our first responders can't respond if, if nobody's picking up the phone, which is what we were experiencing as this 15-year-old's on the floor crying. So I want to make sure we do that. Second, as a long-term fix, I know how we do it. We raise tax revenue, but not by raising individual taxes, because we've seen when you do that, they just go to a state that offers more jobs. What we do is we bring more businesses here that hire more people and bring bigger salaries than peoples, then the tax base goes up. So that's my one fix. Three seconds, there you go.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Casada.
Grow taxes, not raise taxes. So I have a couple of questions. So if they do come back, Chief, do they come back at the pay that they left? Or do they got to start again at the bottom and work their way, you know, up? I mean, because, you know, I, I think it's only fair that they do that, you know, some of the, so as you all know, my four neighbors are MDC guards. I think, I don't know how many times I've probably said that, so you all know, I live next to MDC officers. And so I have a weekly meeting out in the front yard with these guys. And, and I had the same type of response, you know, it was like, hey, man, I could go work at Chick-fil-A, right? And not live with all these prisoners and deal with all this stress and all these extra hours and, you know, and, and it's hard to hear that, you know, because I know what they go through, I know what they do. But I did have a comeback to them. I'm like, yeah, but, you know, Chick-fil-A isn't going to give you para, it's not going to give you this, you know, so we got to make sure that, you know, it's bigger than just pay. So with that statement being made, do they come back in and get the same kind of benefit? I mean, I don't, I support it because, look, I know, you know, even in construction, I'm trying to do a little job and to get guys to come to work is crazy, you know, and, and framers and whatever, right? And so I could imagine, you know, what we're dealing with, you know, probably in city and the county. Quick story, I applied for a permit with the city. It took them a month to get back on my permit to start construction. I wanted to do this before winter came. And it took a month before they approved my plans. And then I needed an amendment because I couldn't get trusses until February. And so in order to build trusses on your site, you have to get a structural engineer and submit an amendment. So I submitted an amendment, and they, and usually amendments, they just sign it off that day. It took three weeks for an amendment to go through. And finally, I called the city and I go, what's up? They told me they have one person doing permitting in the city of Albuquerque, a city that's growing, a city that we're trying to push forward, has one permit person. So it's happening, right? So I wanted to tell you that story because I know firsthand that it's happening. I bet you they would really love to hire some guys back that retired to come do some permitting until they could find guys. So I agree that it should be a short-term fix and that we need to use it as just a crutch to keep everything going, to relieve my neighbors. uh, to keep everything going, to relieve my neighbors, uh, so they don't have to work so much. But so my two questions, I know I'm, I'm, I'm so exhausted. I can't believe I'm talking. But, and I'm sure you guys want me to shut up too. But, um, do you get insurance? And do you start at the pay you left? Those are the questions. I'm so sorry, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, so I think like the, the position that you're talking about, the MDC, as you know, they're unionized. So, um, you know, a lot of there's just, they probably would more than likely start at the same pay as kind of everybody else, although the cadets, when they come in, they're not unionized. But once you get, you know, once you're there for a year or so, then you become unionized, right? So we have to, all of union employees have to be, especially at the MDC, at the same rate of pay. And as far as, uh, benefits, you know, that's a really good question. I'm assuming that they, because they're paying into para, remember they're still paying into para. So I'm assuming that they probably will get the benefits, um, that, you know, everybody else is getting. They still though, remember they still have to pay into para. Uh, but they're not going to, when, when they, when they quit working, that's it because there, it doesn't, it, although they contributed to para, their salaries don't get, um, counted as of, that's when they retire, when they fully retire. It's just, everything just kind of ends. I don't know if that makes sense, but because there's, they're collecting their para.
Okay. It kind of does. I just don't know when they go back, what happens to all of that. That's all.
Right.
And, and I, if you can't completely answer that now, that's okay. You know, just get back to us on that. Uh, and that way we just know, you know, what, what, what's all involved. That's all. I think we, I think, you know, it sounds like everybody's like, yeah, let's, you know, let's, let's staff, let's staff up because we need to, so. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Casada.
Shirley, I know you're the para expert. Um, is there something that you wanted to add to clarify?
What I was, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Casada, uh, what I was going to say was that like County Manager was saying, so if, if this legislation were to go through, because it's like throughout the entire state and it's probably in the smaller counties are even hurting worse than we are and we're hurting pretty bad. Um, if you applied for a CO position and you came back as a CO, like County Manager said, you would get that rate of pay that they pay now for the CO. Uh, if you came back as, uh, Captain Battalion in the fire, you'd get that rate of pay. If you came back and you applied for a DCM position, you'd get that rate of pay. So it's whatever pay for the position that you would apply for. Um, so there's two avenues that you could take. You could suspend your para, which then would allow you to contribute, uh, which is exist today. You could contribute and reset your wages, but you wouldn't draw your para. This legislation that we're looking at is saying, let them have their para and get their benefits, but also get a wage. So it would be kind of like a private sector person that retired from P and M, gas company, Intel, wherever, coming to work for the county because they're separate. You can still get your retirement from them, but you'd also now drawing a check from the county and getting those benefits.
Thank you, Shirley. That, that explained everything for me. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. So any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and move to approve this item. Is there a second? I saw Commissioner Casada's hand first. So all in favor and Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboya.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
So called.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously. Now moving on to the 2022 New Mexico County's legislative priorities. Clay Campbell to present.
Good evening Commissioners. Clay Campbell, uh, Chief of Staff of the County Manager. Each year, New Mexico County has asked all county commissions statewide to endorse or support, uh, legislative priorities of NMC. And this year in 2022, as explained in your packet, they have essentially five items that revolve around, uh, restoring, uh, reimbursing funds to count, to counties for detention facilities, for transporting state prisoners, um, also to protect the law enforcement fund. And there's also a campaign to help, uh, counties renovate state district courthouses as well as a behavioral health item. Uh, I stand for any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions? I know we've been giving, given, given briefings on these, so. Um, I am seeing no questions. Would somebody like to make a motion? Yeah, you're all fired up. Commissioner Casada, you're moving it.
I'll move for approval, Madam Chair.
Okay. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Barboya. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboya.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
Aye.
Mr. Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Piscotti, I'm having trouble hearing.
Oh, aye.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And so moving on to the fifty-fifth legislature, second session, 2022, Burnaleo County Legislative Policy Priorities. Clay Campbell, please present on that.
Good evening Commissioners. Again, uh, each year we present a resolution that we spend most, much of the year working on with, uh, uh, staff as well as our state lobbyists. And so, uh, we have divided the resolution this year into a policy section and a funding section. I'm happy to go into them if you wish. Uh, if not, I stand for questions.
Any questions? Who's going to move this one?
I move for approval, Madam Chair.
Okay. I'll second that. Um, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboya.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
So called. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. And now, um, nine E, Amending Project Revenue Bond for Desert Willow Apartments Project. Mei Ling or Marcos to present.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends authorizing the Burnaleo County Commission to approve a notice of intent to adopt an ordinance to amend ordinance number two thousand eight dash six for the Desert Willow Apartment Project for Multi-Family Housing Refunding Revenue Bonds Series two thousand eight. So essentially this is a two thousand eight affordable housing project that is now doing a refinance. And since the county is a member of the, uh, project, has to go through the commission to approve the refinancing. Uh, but nothing will change to the existing two hundred and twenty-four, uh, um, affordable uh, multi-family unit and the, all the units will stay affordable. I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions? I'm seeing no questions. Um, Commissioner Benson, I see you're the sponsor. Would you like to move it?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Casada. And all in favor, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Barboya.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
So called.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Now on to approvals. Um, accounting, annual comprehensive financial report. The ACFER for the fiscal year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-one. Jackie Sanchez to introduce and Brandon Credle to present. Take it away.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is a motion to accept the audited annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year end June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. This acceptance is a requirement by the Office of State Auditor prior to publishing. Clifton Larson Allen contracted external auditors are in attendance to present and answer any questions that the Commissioners may have. Thank you, and I will now turn it over to CLA.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Brandon, take it away. Please unmute yourself. You're still muted. Brandon Credle, you're still muted. Julianne, can you unmute them?
I can't unmute them. I'm asking them to unmute, but it's not working. So they've joined. Why? Okay, there we go.
Oh, wait, I think there they are.
Okay. Thank you. Can you hear us now?
Yes. Yes, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, um, my name is Georgie Ortiz. I'm the engagement partner for the Burnaleo County Audit for year ending June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-one. Um, we had an exit conference with management and the Audit Committee November eighth, and we submitted the financial statements to the state auditors and it was released December sixth. Um, the, um, information in front of you is just the auditor's responsibility under generally accepted auditing standards. I'll just briefly go over a few of those things. Um, the first one was uncorrected misstatements in the financial statements, which there were none. There were no disagreements with management or difficulties encountered. We had many discussions, um, with management, but there were no disagreements. And management, um, did represent us that the information they provided us was correct in the financial statements. I'd like to point out that, um, five of the six prior year findings were cleared, which is very good. Um, there was one repeat and a, a couple, um, very small findings in the current year. I'm going to let Brandon go over those findings. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, good evening. Um, I'm going to be going over some of what we would consider the results in the schedule of findings and question costs from the audit this year. Um, for this year, we did have three findings, as Georgie mentioned. Um, the first of which we have listed here as twenty twenty-one dash oh oh one. That is the finding that was repeated from fiscal year twenty twenty, and it is related to the disaster recovery plan for the county. Um, the overall county does have a disaster recovery plan in place, but it's not being, uh, currently tested. And so that is the finding that we issued and based on the response from management that is intended to be corrected in fiscal year twenty-two, um, so over the next six months. Uh, the second finding that we had was related to internal controls over time sheets and payroll. Um, this was a finding that we, uh, issued as a part of our test work in reviewing some of the time sheets for the Metro Detention Center. Um, there is a stated policy that these are to be, uh, signed and reviewed and the staff were not following that, uh, internal policy. Therefore, uh, we made a recommendation that policy be updated or that process be reviewed. Uh, the final finding that we issued was related to a federal award. Um, within FY twenty, Burnaleo County, uh, suspended from the Coronavirus Relief Fund. Uh, that was the only major federal program that we audited this year. And this finding came up as a result of that test work. Um, as part of our test work, we reviewed some payroll reports and reconciliations. And we noticed that some of the data was incorrect that was being pulled into those calculations. Um, our recommendation was just to formalize a process around that. And based on management's response, that process has been updated and there is now a more formalized review and approval process over that. Um, so at that point, I might go ahead and pause, um, just in case there are any additional questions or comments. I know that I went through a couple of things right there.
Okay. Are there any questions? I'm seeing none.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to go over, as Georgie mentioned before, um, we did have six findings in the prior year and all of those were cleared except for the disaster recovery plan. Um, we really appreciate all of the efforts that the entire accounting budget, finance divisions put in, and then all the other supporting departments that we work with, um, pretty closely throughout the audit. So we just again, wanted to extend our gratitude towards the county for letting us serve, uh, as the auditors again for this last year. Um, one other key point, the audit report is a public document at this point. Um, so if anyone is interested, it is available to be accessed on the state auditor's website. Um, we also have our contact information listed here if anyone would like to reach out to us after this meeting. And that, that's all that we have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for that report. Any questions or comments from the Commissioners? I am seeing none. Um.
I guess I'll just make a quick comment to say that we, um, I think we celebrated the, uh, the successful audit at the beginning of the agenda, right? Um, so yeah, good way to organize the agenda, guys. No, thanks for your work. Appreciate it. Um, glad y'all got awarded for your great and hard work. Thank you.
Okay.
And I'd like to just say too that Aki Chan, uh, Sanchez and her group do a, a great job. Um, and so I know they were shorthanded too, and, um, yeah, I, we can't say enough. We do a lot of audits of state agencies and, um, large local agencies and, um, very good group.
Yeah, I agree. You make us Burnco proud. So I am ha- very happy to move to approve the ACFER. Surely am I saying that right? For the fiscal year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second? It was a tie between Commissioner Casada and Commissioner Barboya. So I think we've got our quorum right there, but Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Barboya.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Uh, Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
So called.
Okay, thank you. That passes unanimously. Uh, the next item, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Award Approval of Projects. Um, Shirley Reagan and staff to present.
Actually, um, Commissioner, it'll be, uh, Madam County Manager, or does she moved on my screen? We'll start and then I'll pick up from there.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Shirley. Um, I'll just be brief. So as everyone knows, Burnaleo County was identified as the eligible local government to receive a hundred and thirty-one point nine million dollars in direct aid. And this was to, um, combat the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, so during the two public work sessions, as you all recall, with Burnaleo County Commissioners, uh, so on, we had two of them. One was August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, and then the other one was August twenty-third. Um, so some suggested, uh, projects were prioritized and these projects were submitted and approved um, by you all on September twenty-eighth. Um, and, and basically it was just for staff to, to do an analysis. So the analysis was done and there were five different projects, um, that, um, we are bringing forward to you. The first one is, there's three proposed under the Behavioral Health for the Care Campus. Um, so, um, basically for the young adult, let's see, Recovery Healthcare, um, Health for the Care Campus. And the other one was for the Young Adult Recovery Project Program at the Care Campus. The third is the, the, the Care Campus Behavioral Health Recovery Project. And then we also have, um, one of the other projects was the Sandia Peak Utilities and the Yes Housing, Kaya Porta, Multi-Family, uh, Mixed Juice, um, Housing Project. So just want to, um, let you all know and to, or want to make So just want to let you all know and to want to make you all feel confident that they were, they were all presented, and they do comply with the guidance from the U.S. Treasury Department detailed in the ARPA interim final rule, and the compliance and reporting guidance. So I want you to just be reassured that we made sure that we complied fully, and I have a lot of faith in our staff, as I know that you all do, particularly our finance staff, and then we had Clay and all the people that, such as Elias and Enrico, and Lisa, that basically gave us the expertise and their opinions on whether these, that these projects complied. So want to let you know also that we have, I believe, John Chavez from Sandia Peak Utilities. He's here to answer questions, and I know that I saw Chris Baca. I'm not sure Quipadias Lucero or Holly Barella are here from YES Housing. And of course, we have staff to answer questions. So I'll turn it over to Shirley so she can go over the motions with you. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Thank you, Julie. Madam Chair, there are six motions. I'll read the motions. If that works for you, and then rather than, or do you want me to read them one at a time and then vote on them? Or do you want me just read them all and then vote on the package?
Yeah, I, it seems like usually we just vote on the package. So if that's, if that's okay with everybody. And if anybody has any questions on any of them, they'll have an opportunity to ask questions. But yeah, go ahead.
So the first motion is to approve the use of ARPA funds in the amount not to exceed $1 million for item number Structure 01, Care Campus Young Adult Recovery Project Capital Investment in accordance with Expenditure Category 1.07. The second motion is to approve the use of ARPA funds in the amount not to exceed $1.25 50 million for the Care Campus Young Adult Recovery Project Program in accordance with Expenditure Category 1.10. The third one is to approve the use of ARPA funds in an amount not to exceed $2.250 million for item number NI12, Care Campus Behavioral Health Recovery Project for OPS and MATS in accordance with Expenditure Category 1.10. The fourth one is to approve the use of ARPA funds in the amount not to exceed $3,335,325 for Infrastructure Project 02, Sandia Peak Utilities in accordance with Expenditure Category 5.15. The fifth motion is to approve the use of ARPA funds in the amount not to exceed $522,346 for Infrastructure Project 13, YES Housing, Cali Cuarta Multifamily Mixed Use Housing Project in accordance with Expenditure Category 3.10. The fourth, the sixth motion is to authorize a county manager to execute subsequent agreements and amendments for the projects approved by the Board of County Commissioners as presented under ARPA. I stand for any questions. I would like to say that the next steps now are to prepare subrecipient agreements and project timelines and start spending the money.
Okay. Are there any questions, Commissioner Barboah? I see a real hand.
Yeah, my real hand. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure I'm understanding, and these are the number. First, I guess my first question is, we went over this when ARPA funds were first given, made available to us, and these are the same items with the same numbers that we had sort of approved earlier on. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboah, that is correct.
Okay. And then, thank you so much, Shirley. And then, I guess this, I'm just interested in where this Caia Cuarta Multi, I'm assuming on Fourth Street. Is this already existing housing, or is this new development of housing? For the Caia Cuarta Multimixed?
For Commissioner, Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboah, I would defer to Chris Baca.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboah. It's a vacant piece of land right now. It's on, it's a block south of Candelaria on Fourth Street, right near Garfield Middle School. The community there worked over a decade, I believe, in its elected leadership to acquire that land that was formerly occupied by a junkyard, and they had it cleared. The city of Albuquerque bought the property and put it up for an RFP to build specifically affordable housing on that site. We bid on it, YES Housing bid on it, and we were subsequently awarded that contract. Our intent is to build 61 affordable units, including five retail units and four live-work units. The parcel that is bonded on the west side by Seventh Street will be townhomes available for 80% under, 80% AMI and below. So it's all affordable, and it falls in within the ARPA Section 3.10. But it is just a piece of dirt right now.
Thank you, Mr. Baca.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboah might add, in the, in one of the emails I sent, there was a PowerPoint presentation, and it has a page that kind of summarizes that information and shows a rendering of what the property will look like once it's, the project will look like once it's completed.
Thanks. Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad that Chris was able to join us today. He is working very hard on this project, just so you know it, but I think it has been a decade, Chris. Was able to get the money to acquire it when I was in the city council. That's how long ago it was. But it's a real shot in the arm for this neighborhood. Hasn't really seen a lot of investment, and now we're going to see something really beautiful. And it is in a stable neighborhood, which is really nice, but it also is right, has public transportation, places for people to work, so it's a good site. And so I appreciate the support to get the money for this project. Thank you.
I see no more hands up. Commissioner O'Malley, would you like to make a motion for approval?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to move, is it, what's the item number of?
We're doing it as a package, so.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I would like to move the whole thing.
I will second. Commissioner Benson, are you seconding?
Second, yeah.
The whole thing? So all in favor of the whole thing? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Barboah.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
So called.
Thank you very much. That passes unanimously.
Commissioner Piscotti, I'd just like to add that the reason we brought it back is that in, at those work sessions, you all requested that we bring them back when we were ready to commence the projects, and that's why there's also no financial resolution, because the funding was already approved. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you for clarifying that. Again, I see Commissioner Barboah nodding. I think we're all in favor of that transparency and explaining that and showing people step by step. So thank you. So moving on to the next item. 2021 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the County and AFSMI 18 Local 2260 White Collar. Bernadette Perez to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Human Resources is seeking commission approval of the negotiated changes to the AFSMI Council 18 White Collar Local 2260 Collective Bargaining Agreement. Negotiations began between Burnley County and AFSMI Council 18 White Collar. They began on July 30th of 2020, and we reached tentative agreement on October 28th of 2021. The union was able to ratify the contract on December 6th of 2021, and the contract expires on June 30th of 2022. I would like to thank the county manager, the management team, and the union negotiating team members of the White Collar Local 2260 for their collaboration in reaching this agreement. I'm not certain if there is a representative from White Collar in attendance tonight and has anything to add, otherwise I stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? I'm not see, oh, there he is, Commissioner Casada. With his real hand.
I move for approval. Unions, unions, unions.
Okay, I will go ahead and second that. So all in favor, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Barboah.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley. I didn't hear, but I'm assuming I don't see her.
Oh, I see her. Commissioner O'Malley?
Okay, good.
Oh, I'm sorry. I.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
So called.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. We're moving on to the last voting item for this evening. The 2021 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the County and AFSMI Council 18 Local 1536. YSC, Bernadette Perez to present.
Good evening again, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The Human Resources Department is seeking commission approval of the negotiated changes to the AFSMI Council 18 YSC Local 1536 Collective Bargaining Agreement. Negotiations between Burnley County and AFSMI Council 18 Local 1536 commenced on June 29th of 2020, and we reached tentative agreement on October 21st of 2021. The union was able to ratify the contract on November 3rd of 2021, and the contract expires June 30th of 2024. I would also like to thank the county manager, the management team, and the union negotiation team members of the YSC Local 1536 for their collaboration in reaching this agreement. YSC Local 1536 Union President Daniel Prevencio is in attendance tonight and has been very patient throughout the meeting, and in the event that he has anything to add, and I also stand for any questions if there are any.
Okay, are there any questions? I don't see any questions, but Daniel, I feel sorry for you, because this has been a long meeting. Do you want to say a few words?
Yeah, let him speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Perez. I would like to thank, on behalf of Local 1536, as a part of YSC and the Board of County Commissioners, for the approval of the collective bargaining agreement between Burnley County and AFSMI Council 18 Local 1536, including the much-needed changes for the youth program officers who supervise the detained youth of Burnley County and other counties, and for recognizing as part of the collective bargaining agreement, the YSC case managers and nurses as part of the union. Thank you. And not to forget to mention also the Burnley County negotiating team, who we spent many, many hours of collaborations and got to know one another in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. I will move to approve. Is there a second? I see, I see a lot of hands going out, man. I saw Commissioner Casada's first, so let's go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Barboah. Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Aye, and I want to add my thanks to the county manager, because she's the one who has to put this all together in the first place. Thank you, Julie.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
So called.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Okay, everybody, get your buttered popcorn, because I am up next with the MDC report. That would be the Metropolitan Detention Center. I'll try to hit the highlights, so it won't be too long. I just want to mention that as Chair of the Burnley County Commission, and as required by New Mexico State Statute, I am required to conduct an inspection of the Burnley County Metropolitan Detention Center. And that, so that was done on October 26th, 2021. And due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this tour was conducted virtually using Microsoft Teams and MDC's surveillance system with 4K digital cameras. There were actually a lot of MDC staff who were very helpful. Erin Thomas did most of the tour for us. She began by showing us the law enforcement area and provided details about how the area is used by officers when bringing in a new inmate into the custody of MDC, including the new body scanners that have resulted in an increase of contraband discovery when a new inmate is booked to prevent contraband from entering MDC. Then we were shown live footage from various angles of receiving discharge and transfer, also known as booking. Ms. Thomas informed us that women and men are screened for their criminal charges and medical needs as well before being placed in separate cells. Inmates have an opportunity to use free phones in this area. We then moved to the FOX unit. FOX 1 houses general population inmates with a risk scale between four to six, with nine being the most risk. We went on to FOX 3, and it was explained to us that this unit currently houses higher-risk inmates that are still in general population. A live feed of PAC 1, also known as the Health Service Unit, was shown to us, and this unit was housing males suffering from mental health issues that required more care. The males here are provided medical treatment and live in an area that is an open dormitory with the intent of providing the least restrictive housing possible. Toward the end of the tour, we were also shown a different area of the Health Services Unit that houses inmates with behavioral problems that prohibits the inmates from living in the open dorm setting that the PAC 1 provides. Restrictive housing units were also shown by video, and it was explained to us that they were changed in order to comply with state law as applies to inmate segregation and requirements for human contact. RHU 4 houses inmates that are at a high security risk because of gang affiliation or other factors, and movement of these individuals requires two correctional officers in four-point restraints. So safety is definitely an issue and looked after. We then looked at the detox pod, and this is where you could see female inmates in boat-type beds that are out on the open floor, so the correctional officer on duty can better monitor them and respond quickly as they are detoxing. Finally, Ms. Thomas showed us the renovated kitchen area that had several contractor employees working and making food for inmates in MDC. At the end of our tour, we discussed some important topics. First, we discussed the ongoing transition to the new medical provider, Horizon, which started on October 16th, so that was just 10 days before we had our tour. They were still in the process of transitioning to a new electronic medical system and hiring employees to fill employee vacancies. COVID-19 impacts on the jail were also discussed. MDC is still having to seclude incoming inmates in a secure area until they can confirm they are not positive or have not been recently exposed to COVID-19. These precautions have impacted space within MDC and where they can house inmates. This is just a very truncated account of the report. And the full report is, is available. It's in our agenda packet for this meeting. So if people are interested in reading that full report, they can go and read that. Daniel Roberson was on that tour. I see he's in this meeting and I appreciate him very much for. Really putting, helping to put that report together. And if there's any questions about that that you would like to ask. He's, he's here. He can certainly answer the question. So are there any questions at this point about the MDC report in the tour?
I guess just if there was any highlights around the Horizon and I got to take that tour, I suggest others should too. But like in that conversation, if there was any report backs about.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I did ask about that because the tour was ten days after the new contract was put into place. And so they were, you know, they tried to retain as many of the staff. From the old medical contract and, but they were still looking, needing to hire more people. Definitely, I'm going to, you know, again, put in a plug that we need many more behavioral health. Specialists in the, in the pipeline, in the workforce pipeline. It's really hard to find people to hire. And it's a, it's a, it's a super difficult job. So they, this, yeah, the tour was October twenty sixth, so. I, I'd, I'd actually like to hear an update of how they're doing now, now that it's December to see how well staffed up they are and. And how they're doing, but it seemed like things were going pretty well at, you know, ten days in when we had the tour, so.
I guess I just, I meant, thank you, Chair, and I mentioned that earlier today, a wife of a corrections officer, MDC. Contacted me, lives in my district and she noted that her husband, a corrections officer, said that. There was, part of the staff was that there, like eight staff from the medical side had left and they replaced them without estate folks to her dismay. So I guess I just, maybe it's a question for Daniel or the detention facility maintenance oversight. We talked a lot about local. How for this round for Horizon, it was a little bit impossible because of. Different barriers and readiness of local providers. But we knew that that would maintain possibly some, and I recognize that sometimes new people have to come in and clean house. So I don't know what the details were of why those staff left, if it was better because we cleaned house or if it was. Because they're not excited about the new leadership, but I, I think it's something that I'm definitely consistently worried about. So I don't know if that's just a comment or if Daniel or others have sort of some updates about hopeful progress around that.
Yeah. Is there anybody here tonight from MDC? Who can maybe answer that?
All of it, it's only nine twenty. I can follow up. Thank you for your report.
Daniel, do you have something? Okay, go ahead. We don't hear you. We don't hear you, Daniel. It, it could be your computer. I think we've all had problems with our computer and that's why I have my microphone in front of me.
I'm plugged from my other monitor. That's what worked for me.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Barboah, it's my understanding, and I'm sorry, Daniel, I know I, I had the same problem a little bit earlier. That I, I don't believe that, that the evening, I know there, there were a lot of rumors that people just got up. And walked out and that wasn't the case. I think there were like a couple of employees that actually. I think there was one that maybe left and then came back and I think, but I don't think it was anything to the extent that. Where the, the rumors had, you know, indicated, so I think we're there and they're in pretty good shape. But of course, we're working out a lot of kinks with them and I know I can tell you that. There's been a lot of challenges, so I'll be the first to say, but I think, you know, we're doing our best to work with them. So Lisa, did you, Madam Chair, is it okay if Lisa speaks?
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead, Lisa.
Trying to get myself off, off the, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission and Commissioner Barboah. Um, the medical contractor, of course, that is a huge endeavor to transition. They, they trend transitioned, as you stated, on October sixteenth. I have been in contact with Rosanne Otero, Director of Operations. And have talked to the medical contractor, so they are diligently trying to retain. All of the employees that they retain, the majority of them are local. And they have had to bring in some like traveling nurses to kind of support. To, to, you know, fill the positions, but they are offering sign, extensive, pretty good sign on bonuses. They're competing with the other medical facilities in the state. And we are going to have an update meeting with them now in January. To talk about all of the items that were negotiated into the contract and Roseanne and I. Decided that we would give them till January to kind of go in and just have an update meeting with leadership. Just to kind of keep tabs on all of the items that they said they were going to do. But right now it's, it's normal that they're going through transition. It's a huge endeavor. And they are, they are, they are doing, they are doing a good job. So we, we will continue to monitor and provide updates to the commission when requested.
Thank you so much, Lisa, the City of A, Chair, and Daniel texted me or put in the chat directly to me. They apologize for the microphone issues, but the electronic medical system is fully up and running. That's exciting. Staffing is still progressing. We're expecting some important updates in the coming weeks. Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sorry about that.
You know.
I know, I apologize. And, and Commissioner Barboah read my answer exactly how I would say it. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Daniel, for all the work that you've put in on this. I really appreciate you. And Commissioner Casada, is there a reason you unmuted yourself?
I believe I'm the next item.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I was going on to the next item. Thank you, Madam.
Discussion about this.
Okay, yeah, just real quick, I'm just gonna dump this on, on Lucas. I mean, because it's the dumping, illegal dumping. I'm, I'm not hitting him now. It's getting, it's getting late. It's getting late. Yeah, I'm gonna dump this on, on Lucas. It's, as you know, we, we started the illegal dumping partnership. Me and Counselor Pena with the city and we have a lot of buy-in from many entities, a long list that I couldn't go over right now. And, you know, Lucas is the champion who stepped up and took this over. And is doing an excellent job on it, by the way, with, with advertisement and getting things out. But I just wanted to thank him before he does his presentation for hanging out all night and, and actually taking on this really difficult. Extremely important job. Lucas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Casada for inviting me back. Can you hear me?
Perfectly.
But much better than how I left this last presentation in, in October. And, and Robert, I feel your pain if you're still listening in. That was how I left it. So I just have a couple of minutes of your time. If you don't mind, Madam Chair, I would like to share my screen and show just a couple of slides here.
Uh huh, absolutely. I think we're all getting our second win now.
Can you see my screen? How about now?
I cannot see your screen. We might even have county manager do her state of, the union address.
How about now? Can you see it?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Great. So just, just real quickly, our, our partners, I'm not going to name every single one of them. This, this is just a, the logos of all of our partners. These are agencies in our community. That are dealing with illegal dumping at, at their own level on the properties they maintain and. And we all came together with the guidance from Commissioner Casada and, and, and Counselor Pena. And, and others to, to, to get together and just, let's see how we can consolidate our efforts and figure out. A different way of doing things because the way we've been doing things is not working and, you know, just. Trying to catch illegal dumpers that are, you know, we can't be everywhere at once and so catching them is not, is not a viable option. And so really what we, what we're trying to do is, is multifaceted, right? We're, we're getting people, we're getting the sheriffs out there and, and staff out there to, to monitor areas. We're doing different things with, with social media, with education, with events. We just want to get is, try to hit this from, from a lot of different angles. But the, the, the main thing is what we want to do is change the behavior, change the attitude around illegal dumping and dumping of trash. Because it, it just has become acceptable and, and I don't, I don't accept that. I, I, I live in this town. I run around in this town and I, and every bit of trash, I, my eyes just, just see that. And, and especially when, you know, when I'm walking in my neighborhood and I'm picking up trash, if I go drive by the next day and I see trash, it drives me crazy. So anyway, I, I just wanted to kind of spend just a couple of minutes to talk about the. Where we're at with our campaign. So right now we're in a. A, a, a media launch or middle of a media campaign. It started in October and most of that consisted of TV. And we really wanted to focus our, our attention and, and use the Media Match as a. County, a contractor by the, the county uses to, to kind of pull our resources for. For media campaigns. Anyway, they were able to help us identify specific demographics. Specific, just, just really hone in on who our target audience is. And, and so, you know, we wanted to really make sure that we, we reached out to the Spanish speaking population. And so you'll see that Univision and Casa de la Mundo was, was one of the, or two of the. The TV stations that we got a hold of and got some, some spots on. We also, KOAT and KQI. Were, were also supporting some of our, our commercials. And we specifically went after some, some events like the World Cup qualifier, the Latin Music Awards. We even had some, just prior to the, the, the World Series when, when it was on and some NFL game. But then, so that was, that ended in, in November and now we're into, to the next phase and, and really just actually. The continuation from October through December is our digital advertising. And so we have a couple of strategies. And one of them is just to use geo fencing targeting. So this is just to, I mean, down to the, to the neighborhood of, of where. We want to target these mess, this messaging. It goes into social media. It goes into different types of. You know, these advertisements pop up or, and, and also the second strategy is using the, using YouTube. So you have videos that, that pop up whenever you're watching YouTube. And, and so we have some really interesting data to share. That since we started doing this and, and actually just about three weeks ago, I asked to, let's focus a little more on the Spanish speaking. Population on those, those YouTube ads and we have had. And, and the Spanish speaking side, forty thousand views of those YouTube videos. And then on, on the English speaking side of sixty thousand. So this is, this is a tremendous amount of, of views of our YouTube ads. And, and I think that's really a success to show that, that targeting really works. And so I'm just going to show the next slide and I'm almost done, I promise. So this is what we've spent. I just want to show, because the, the commission and city council. Dedicated some funds to, to the illegal dumping partnership and as well as, is, is, is funds from, from our departments with the public works. And the tiny development services department. We also got some funds from Clean and Beautiful Grant that we were able to shift over because. Because of COVID and we couldn't use them for these events that we were planning to have. Anyway, we, we use that to, or a good chunk of that to. To create these materials, the, the ad campaigns, the, 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 the videos, the audios. Stills and billboards and those kind of types of material. We, we spent about thirty four thousand or almost thirty five thousand dollars on that. And then again, using Media Match to, to get that advertising pushed out late in like June of, of, of this year. And then we had some money we should, we moved over and that we rolled over and we were able to get some more funding. From the New Mexico Clean and Beautiful Grants. Again, we got refunded for that and we got about four thousand dedicated directly from that. And then some of our partners stepped up nicely with a couple thousand each. So we are in the middle of a campaign and we're going to pretty much exhaust up, down to like about seven thousand dollars of that. And so, you know, we need more money. We just, we need more help. We need more support. We need, you know, some of our participation and the partnership is kind of waning. And so, you know, your all support is really going to be needed to, to keep this partnership going. And, and so I just wanted to, to throw that out there. I mean, we have sixty thousand dollars. We'll take whatever we can get. To keep this going. We're, we're, I, I mentioned that we hit the New Mexico Clean and Beautiful Grant. We're going to try for the. Recycling and legal dumping grant this, this spring for next fiscal year. We're just trying to get money from wherever we can to just keep this messaging going. That is my presentation. I stand for questions. Thank you.
I have no questions, but I just want to congratulate you. I know that you did some good work in the East Mountains recently and had a really nice article in the Albuquerque Journal. Yeah, so I think that you're getting a lot of just natural. You know, the, the press is, is good because people know what you do and they like it. Because yes, there has definitely been an increase in trash and we hate it. And so we love what you're doing to clean up the county. So thank you. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Tafoya. And well done on making your dollars stretch. Looks like you're covering all the bases and doing a good job. Are you all tracking the, you know, the results of the marketing? So maybe tracking alongside with your marketing dollars, what the trash, what the illegal dumping. Numbers are. That one is a lot harder to, to track because. You know, all of our partners, the city of Albuquerque is right smack dab in the middle of Burnley County. And, you know, they do track how much illegal dumping that they pick up. And, and, and we're, the county is still trying to, to get up to speed with that. We're still working on that. I'm, I, this is something that I've really tried to push our, our, the rest of our partners as well to. To quantify the amount of trash that they're picking up, not just for us to measure this like, like you're asking, like. Are we seeing a decrease in that? But also for, for, for grant funding, whenever we ask for grant funding, we, we have to show. What are we actually dealing with right now? But, but to answer your question, you know, we're trying to get that information. And, but I, I don't have any, any data that I can share with you at this point to show you any kind of impact. And, and you know, this is, we've been doing this for about a year. I think we would need a little bit more time to be able to, to see that type of impact.
Yeah, and it would also be hard to, how to measure it. Because you also might raise awareness and so more people might be calling. They see the advertising and then they call. About illegal dumping. So then it's brought to the awareness more. It's a tough problem and. I'm glad we're doing. And I'm glad we're doing this. Actually, this morning, this very morning, I I was had a meeting with some of my constituents in a neighborhood where there's a lot of illegal dumping with Antonio Harmio. And it went well, but, oh, gosh, it's so frustrating. And my my concern is is that the good guys are going to see the advertising and and, you know, if if they're tempted to litter, they they won't. But the the folks that are just, they know it's wrong. They know it's destructive. They know that it's expensive to clean up. They know it's difficult to clean up. We can't even clean it up if it's on private property. That they're just gonna, you know, it's like all the other criminals in our city. You know, they're, they'll be emboldened and we're not able to really have like clamp down on it. So if we need more money in this, I'm happy to spend it. But I just want to make sure that it's actually doing the, doing what we want to do, which is reducing this. And I know it's is countywide. It's not one district or neighborhood. It's everywhere. So you got a big job and, you know, let us know what you need. But also, I'd like to know how it's working, you know, before we put put more money into it. Like to be able to track it somehow.
Absolutely. We'll we'll continue to to push our partners to quantify how much trash they're they're dealing with and how much they're picking up. And we'll we'll keep doing that. Like I said, we're gonna need some because the campaign, the first campaign started in in June. So we're gonna need some time to to be able to quantify that. We usually do that through through an annual basis of how much we've collected. So, yeah, we'll definitely be keeping track of that. And and also, I wanted to plug, we we also created two websites. Ihavetrash.com and tinglebasura.com. And these are resource pages that anybody who has trash or or wants to report illegal dumping or anything in this around the subject, it's a real quick page that they can go to and and get get access to all these resources.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barboa?
Yeah, I guess I'm interested in that tracking. I think if you're doing targeted media buys, then you should be able to see within like that weeks following, right? In the, like you said, down to the neighborhood, if there was increased like awareness traction calls. Part of what I remember first hearing about that, part of the big part of this campaign was asking people to report illegal dumping. So I guess there's a number there. Is that happening? I think I mentioned to you at the beginning that I'm not, I sort of don't believe in penalty. Like, I think that we're not motivated to report on our neighbors. So that's a hard ask, but always, I'm not the expert. So just, yeah, let's try some things out. But I, but I think, yeah, other, I I also, Willie, I think it's such a big problem and we got to think of ways. But how we can measure the progress of this? Yeah, and I know I sort of as a joke, I want to say like, I don't know, I wanted to talk to you because it's not that I thought. And I was trying to plug for a scene Veruensa campaign because I think that's how you do like, put everybody, put all the shit, seen Veruensa is like, what a shame, right? Like, that's shame. Well, that's the things that our families respond to, that good old Catholic guilt. My two cents. So, yeah, are have we gotten more calls of reporting, I guess?
I will track the calls and and we also, I mean, as I mentioned earlier on, the the number of of hits on or or watches, views of our YouTube videos just skyrocketed since this, since this campaign started this fall. So, I mean, it was like, started with like a couple of hundred views and now we're in the tens of thousands of views. So we're we're getting that awareness out there. But what you all want to see and what I want to see is the reduction in waste hitting our our streets and our and our and our beautiful open spaces. And and so we'll definitely keep an eye on that and 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 try and and get you some real numbers on that kind of data.
So I know for a fact that in my district, I get a lot more emails now on legal dumping. And in the South Valley, people are telling on their neighbors now. I mean, it's, that is starting to work because it comes through my office. I know my office sends Lucas two, three emails a day. Hey, go look at this. Go look at that. Go look at this. Go look at that. And it's a lot more than when I started. Is it coming from this? I I I can't tell you that, but I could tell you that it has increased in us going out and doing stuff. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Commissioner Casada, my constituents are taking photos of the license plates of the trucks dropping off the toilets and tires and stuff.
And and our staff has, you know, picked through the trash and found addresses and 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 contact information and gone to people's houses and say, hey, you know, this belongs to you. There's a big pile of a bit over there. You need to go get it. Otherwise, we can go the the legal route. But why don't you just go ahead and take take care of this on your own? While you're at it, there's a couple of other things right over there that you could grab for us too. And and that has actually been really successful and and just engaging with people. And because most of the time, it's I asked my friend to do this for me or somebody to do it for me and didn't realize my my information is getting out there and dumped on the side of the road. And and they're really shocked, you know, that that's happening. So so we're, you know, we're getting, we're trying this on a lot of different, different routes to to target this this problem.
Okay, thank you. Not seeing any more comments. Thank you so much for the presentation and for all the work that you do. Excuse me. So moving on, the state of the county address has been deferred. And our our next meeting will be next year, Tuesday, January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, at five P M via Zoom. Greg Perez, Chief Perez, did you want to say something?
Yeah, Madam Chair Commissioners, just really quick, we are holding another covid vaccine clinic this Saturday at the atrium from ten to two. This will hopefully want to be one of the last ones that we do. So if you know anybody out there that needs a first shot, second shot, third shot, get them in here and let's get this covid thing laid to rest in in Burnley County. So if you can get out here, we're, we've got about four hundred doses available of Moderna and Pfizer combined. So let's try to make this last push. And again, as we go into the holidays and want to get back with our families, protect ourselves so that we can do that in a healthy manner. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other announcements that people would like to make? Okay.
Happy holidays.
Yeah, and you know, I just want to say honestly, I have loved, I have loved being your chair this year. So thank you for giving me that honor. It's been, it's been better than I honestly thought it would ever be. It's been such an honor. So thank you. And so, yeah, whatever you celebrate, may it bring you joy. And if there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Love you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.